He should have been a New York cop.
Just, just seasonality of the business.
He's a sharp guy, but he always had a little bit of edge on his son. Except for probably his...
Well, so...
Was that like a lot? I think ninety-two thousand is to the new him. I'm kind of lost track of what it was. Seventy years did after that. Sharp kid went to Saint Thomas at Coines.
Kind of Frank, if you really want to be cynical.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour is seven o'clock, and as mayor, I hereby call to order this meeting of the Laconia City Council scheduled for January fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, at this hour. As always, we will begin our meeting tonight with a salute to our American flag. I would ask that you please rise and join Counselor Andrew Hosmer in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll note for the record that the minutes to tonight's meeting are being kept by City Clerk Cheryl Hebert, and I would ask that she please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Counselor Bowles is not with us this evening.
Counselor Lutman.
Present.
Counselor Haynes.
Here.
Counselor Hamel.
Present.
Counselor Hosmer.
Here.
Mayor Angler.
Wow, this is pressure, huh?
Tiebreaker.
I want to go with here. Here wins three to two then, right, tonight? Don't get off and break a tie here, isn't it? Important stuff. All right, so let the record show that five of six counselors are present tonight, and we have a quorum for tonight's meeting. We'll also note for the record that the council is joined at the head table tonight by City Manager Scott Myers, and importantly, for the first time, by our new City Finance Director, Glenn Smith. Welcome, Glenn.
Thank you.
Okay, minutes is the first order of business tonight, regular business. Before us are the minutes to our meeting on December twenty-seventh. Those minutes were distributed to the council on January third. One correction was suggested and made, and unless there are any suggested changes to make at this point in time, I'm going to declare the minutes to our meeting of December twenty-seventh to be accepted by the council as submitted by the clerk. We have no consent and action items to consider tonight, and so we are on to citizens' comments for matters not on the agenda. This is the appropriate time for anyone to rise and speak who wishes to address the council on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda. Only matters at this time that are not on tonight's agenda. Criteria of interest, anyone? No? Okay. We have one interview tonight to make, and that is Ryan Cardella. Is Ryan here? No? All right, so we'll put that off then. Ryan was seeking appointment as a regular member of the Weir's Tiff Advisory Board for a three-year term to expire in two thousand and twenty-one. So we'll pass over that. And we have two public hearings to hold tonight. I'm sure that's why some of you are here. Get my paperwork out here, if you'll bear with me for a moment. First hearing is with regard to cable television rights, licensing agreements. We are holding a public hearing tonight relative to city council resolution two thousand and nineteen dash zero one, relative to a Comcast company proposal for a competitive cable TV franchise in the city of Laconia. Notice that this public hearing was made in the January two, two thousand and nineteen edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at City Hall, the Public Library, the Community Center, and at the S.A.U. office. This granting of this proposed franchise granting has no fiscal impact on the city and will be taken up tonight under unfinished business by the council later on in this same meeting. So I have some, uh, some verbiage to read here tonight, if you will permit me, about this public hearing. It goes as follows. The purpose of today's hearing is to receive the public's input on the proposal from Comcast for a competitive cable TV franchise in Laconia. Atlantic Broadband Company is the current cable operator in our city. Atlantic Broadband's franchise agreement runs until December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three. Comcast proposes to also provide cable TV services in Laconia, which would give residents and businesses a choice of two cable companies. The city council is the franchising authority under New Hampshire law. The New Hampshire law requires that a competitive franchise, such as this one, be no more favorable or no less burdensome than the existing cable operators franchise agreement. We reviewed the proposed cable TV franchise to make sure it complies with the law and negotiated some changes to make sure it is no more favorable and no less burdensome than Atlantic Broadband's franchise agreement. The proposed cable TV franchise agreement that is the subject of this hearing is the product of that work. The public has been invited to attend this hearing through public notice, which was posted two weeks before the hearing. The proposed franchise agreement has been available during that time for public review. Any resident or representative of a local organization who wishes to speak will have that opportunity tonight in just a minute. Please note that some topics are not, not included in the proposed cable TV franchise agreement, such as cable rates and channel selection, as the city has no jurisdiction over those items. Likewise, the cable TV franchise agreement does not deal, does not deal with telephone services or Internet provider services provided by Comcast, as those are outside the jurisdiction of the city. Okay? So we're not addressing tonight telephone service, Internet service, cable rates, or channel selection, because those are not in, within the purview of the city of Laconia as far as this agreement is concerned.
Mayor, could you please explain for the public why that's the case?
Because they're federally regulated.
Just, just, that's important. It's not because we chose not to, because it's federal regulations.
Those parts of it are federally regulated and not, discretion is not given to local communities as to what they may or may not do. Local communities may not have anything to do with the setting of rates. Local communities may not dictate what channels will be covered, or what channels will be put in, what packages with what other channels, or anything like that. That's all, all, uh, under the purview of federal law. All right, so I'm going to open this public hearing at seven oh eight P.M. And before we get to public comment, I'm going to ask Brian Christensen from Comcast to make a short presentation. Mr. Christensen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Through you, for the public record, my name is Tim Kelly. I'm Vice President of Government Regulatory Affairs for Comcast. And with me is my colleague, Brian Christensen. He will be your New Hampshire representative. He has an office in Concord, New Hampshire, so you'll be well represented. Part of the proceedings this evening is to talk about Comcast's standard relative to its qualifications. So there are three qualifications that we have to satisfy in order to be granted a license, that being financial wherewithal, our legal authority, and lastly, our technical qualifications. So I'll talk to the first item, the financial wherewithal. So the first page of the packet that we provided to you shows Comcast Universal as a whole. We have many business units that make up Comcast NBC Universal. Where has Comcast Cable Communications applying for a franchise within the city? If you take all of these entities together, we have a market cap of about a hundred and sixty billion dollars. The reason why I state that is to demonstrate that indeed we do have the financial wherewithal to build a system. If you go back in history, twenty, thirty, forty years ago, there used to be investment groups, smaller businesses that would approach a franchising authority like yourself, seeking a license or a franchise. And a lot of times, they didn't have that financial ability. A lot of times, they would ask for the paper and then go sell it. Times have changed. We'll demonstrate that, you know, we have many franchises throughout the country and the ability financially to be able to build a system here. And the system we're going to build is going to be a state-of-the-art, next-generation, gigabit system for informational purposes only. We're not supposed to talk about broadband, but it will be a gig system with a lot of bandwidth that will support many, many services. So as far as financial wherewithal, we certainly have it. We've budgeted for the build, and we'll be ready to go. On the second page, this is a layout of our footprint in Massachusetts, New Hampshire, and Maine. We have three hundred and ten franchises in those states, actually, three hundred and eleven. Your neighbors signed up with us last week, so the number's three hundred and eleven now. The greater Boston region is which you'll be a part of, okay? So if, if we make a change in the city of Boston, if we make a change in the city of Cambridge as far as augmentation and new advancements and enhancements, Nashua, Manchester, Lowell, Massachusetts, wherever it may be, Laconia gets the same thing. We don't cherry pick as far as technology and how we roll it out. Everyone gets the same. So you'll be treated the same as all the other communities that are within the three hundred and ten franchises that we have.
Three hundred and eleven.
Three hundred and eleven. Thank you, Brian, for that. The greater Boston region is part of the Northeast Division. Our headquarters is in Manchester, New Hampshire. That comprises fourteen states on the eastern part of the country. We have about two thousand franchises within that area. And as we get bigger and look at the country as a whole, we operate in thirty-nine states in the District of Columbia, and we have about six thousand franchises all in, all in total. Reason why I say that is because, yes, indeed, we have the legal authority to have a franchise. We have six thousand plus, so we've demonstrated that, in fact, we can meet that standard. The last standard that I want to speak to is the technical standard. And just piggybacking off of what I said, we operate over six thousand franchises throughout the United States. We build, own, maintain, repair. We have a local field management area in Portsmouth. We're planning on building another type facility up here in the Lakes Region, which will include our head end. The network that we build is going to be brand-new. Like I said, it's going to be, you know, next-generation, state-of-the-art, and future-proof, meaning we can augment it with bandwidth as we need it as we move forward. So over that network, on the next slide, if you will, it shows, it shows the products and services that we'll offer. Now, I'll talk to the X One Platform, that's the cable television platform. That is a next-generation video service. We have literally tens of thousands of on-demand choices, many of which are free. We also have over five hundred linear channels, most of which are in HD. We also carry standard definition, so if you don't have an HD television, you can still watch our programming. And we're, we're moving into 4K. That's the next generation of picture quality. For informational purposes only, and this is when I'll talk about the other services, we also offer Internet service or our X Fi application. Soon as we roll out in the city, you'll have, you'll have the ability to get gigabit speeds already. Now, if you don't need those, we run the gamut as far as megabits per second, meaning we'll hit different price points for people that need whatever they need. But we are the only company in the country that offers gigabit throughout our whole footprint. And again, it's important to say, what others might have in other parts of our region, Laconia gets. So there's no distinguishing where you are geographically. The second, or third item we run over is Xfinity Voice. That's our standard voice product. I won't get into it too much, other than to say it's a landline service. So folks have cell service and they want landline service. There are a lot of enhancements that we have, whether it's, you know, caller ID, or, you know, voice recording, and a lot of different features that I really won't get into. Xfinity Home is the last product and service that we run over our system. It's an automated service. So if you're on vacation, you want to adjust your thermostat from afar, you can do it through that. As we get into the Internet of Things, which is, you know, your appliances being connected to the Internet, your refrigerator can tell you when you're low on milk, this all runs through the automated service. So we will offer all those, and again, just for informational purposes, I just wanted to let you know what we'd be bringing to town, to the city. And lastly, is Xfinity Mobile. We just started this. We have, I think, over a million subscribers now, so it's a cellular service. If you're a broadband customer, you're eligible to sign up for Xfinity Mobile. We're not allowed to sell it outside of footprint. So lucky for you, if we come into the city, the residents and your constituents will actually be able to sign up for the service if they so choose. We have a different model than most cell companies in that we offer a per-gigabit cost or an unlimited cost. And I won't go into the pricing, because you promised we wouldn't talk about it, so... But it's a very, very attractive offer, and it seems to be going really well. Do it over a national carrier's network through our mobile virtual network operator agreement. I'd love to tell you who it was, but I'm not allowed to. So you'll, you'll know someday. So with that, again, I just wanted to touch upon the financial wherewithal, the technical qualifications that we have, and the legal ability to do this. And Brian and I would be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Kelly or Mr. Christensen? Counselor Hamel.
Couple of questions. If you get the approval, what do you figure your timeframe would be to start installation, and what would be an end date that services would be provided?
Sure. So as I mentioned, we have to build a head end. So between building our head end and make-ready work, permitting for the poles within the city, that's all a pretty long process. I know in the license, we have eighteen months after we begin construction. In Rochester, we were able to attack it fairly aggressively. The quicker we do it, the better off it's going to be for residents or constituents, but also for us to begin to generate a return. So there's nothing that I can think of logically that would make us, slow us down. Like I said, we've already had the discussions in budgeting and capital. It's ready to go, but we have to get through, you know, the hurdles of make-ready work on the poles and permitting, things like that.
So Rochester, how long did that take you to do that?
So we, again, this is just for a model, if you will. So we agreed to a franchise in Rochester December of two thousand and seventeen. We started hooking up our first customers in July of two thousand and eighteen.
All right. Now, you talked about a head-in, or if that's the right word. So is that your satellite receiving station?
It's our hub. Sorry, you get so used to our vernacular, sometimes we're, you know, it's, so it's our hub, if people, if that's better explained. Yes, that's where we receive, probably be a fiber connect.
Okay, so you would, you have a satellite receiving station somewhere, and you would bring that fiber to Laconia and not have a satellite receiving footprint on the ground here?
Yes. Generally, the signals are now run fiber-direct from whether it's the source or a masterhead end. I don't, the system's not fully designed yet, but I wouldn't anticipate seeing satellite dishes at the hub.
Is it Londonderry?
Yeah.
So we have a masterhead end in Londonderry, New Hampshire.
And an Exeter.
That distributes all around.
Exeter and Maynard, Massachusetts. So they all do different things, but most of this, and now I'm going to get two technicals, run over our converged regional area network. We have huge backbones that go across the country, and then we have redundant backbones on the East Coast in different locations, and it's all...
So if you lose the one in Londonderry, you can switch over to the other one, which still have our communication.
We have redundancy. Yeah, we have redundancy. In fact, part of the design here, you'll have redundancy up in this area as well.
Anyone else? Counselor Cheney.
In a discussion with our attorney, there was something mentioned about the contract we have with Atlantic or Metrocast, or whoever it is, requires them to provide us access to make emergency announcements. She informed us that Comcast couldn't do that, or wouldn't do that. I think we both agree you could do that. My concern is, as I understand it, Comcast uses the state's emergency alert system, which has a number of difficulties. One is finding somebody to answer the phone on a Saturday night at ten o'clock, and the second is there's no geo-fencing in the EAS system. So Laconia is going to have to listen to everything that happens in Manchester and Londonderry and wherever else if there's an emergency, and they're going to have to listen to an emergency here in Laconia using your system. I've checked, it's my understanding that it's a software change. And since the other franchisee is required to do that, and as I understood the mayor's lead-in, you can't have any advantage that they don't have, are you prepared to provide us with local emergency notification?
So the answer to answer your question, Counselor, is we do have a couple of places that have the local override for EAS. In fact, what's that?
Not New Hampshire.
Not New Hampshire? All right, Massachusetts. So what's happened was there was a, and it's almost the same, you can't geo-fence this either. Off of a head end down in Massachusetts, there was a boil water order that was put out by one community. You had ten other communities, people boiling water. We found that it, it, it's an antiquated way of going about messaging. A lot of communities have switched over to Code Red, an auto dialer, reverse nine-one-one, texting, emails. And so a lot of communities haven't asked us for that, probably, I would say, in the past five to ten years. Those didn't exist back in the old franchising days, and so I could understand why they were as popular. But from our, you know, from our position, it's something that has not worked well. And so we do carry both state and federal, so FEMA and New Hampshire.
Emergency.
Emergency. So those are automatic, and those are required per federal statute. The local is not. You know, I believe Brian has talked to the Special Cable Council about this, and, you know, we probably won't agree to that. However, the document and the franchise, we have to meet the standards and make sure that in the entirety, in the whole, that we have something comparable or parity, parity or equity to the existing incumbent's franchise, meaning we might not match that exactly, but monetarily, we've made up other things so that actually benefits the community more than had we done the same thing. So that's the long-winded way of saying that, you know, it's just something that we don't do anymore.
Well, again, it's a software change, so you're telling me you're not willing to make a software change?
Well, it's a little more than that. It's a little more. We have the X One Platform now, so it doesn't operate the same way as the old legacy head end equipment would. We have different platforms. You know, you have your legacy platform, you have your X One Platform, so it wouldn't work the same. And it's my understanding that it'd have to be a county-wide thing. So again, if it was, if there was something that went out from Guilford or wherever, residents in Laconia would be overridden. Now, if it was a really important message on television, either at the federal, state level and the local level cuts in, people aren't going to see those messages either. That's why we try to stay away from it and ask, and, you know, the communities use the Code Red and the reverse nine-one-one and the texting, that seems to work better than what we could offer at the local level.
What commitment, then, can you make to assure that we'll have, to assure that we'll have rapid access to the EAS system? I ran emergency communications for the state for twenty-four years. I know how it works, and it's going to take time. And if something, God forbid, ever requires it, I want our police or fire chief to have access to emergency notification to people at Laconia.
Does the city, does the city not have a Code Red or reverse nine-one-one or auto dialer, texting, emails?
The city does not have a telephone-based one. We have a number of emails. We have social media-type of accounts, but we do not have the reverse dialer at this time.
Well, that's maybe something we should talk more about offline.
Perhaps you can provide us with Code Red or some similar service.
That's something we certainly can discuss.
Counselor Lutman.
So in your response to the counselor, you were talking about the value-added equivalencies for the public's interest. Can you please outline what those are and how your response that you just gave might fit into that as a possible adjustment?
Yeah, so one of the things we, we did put in here was straight hard cash, back to the community, which I don't believe is in the existing Atlantic Broadband-Metracast agreement. You know, we are, we're going to be giving the community ninety-six thousand dollars over the term of this franchise agreement, so that is the main value add that we would bring to the table.
Can you explain for the public how that works?
Yep. Over the course of the ten-year franchise, we would propose sending nine thousand six hundred dollars to the city annually.
And are there other benefits beyond that?
I think you'd find the other benefits in the franchise agreement mirror the Metracast- Atlantic Broadband agreement. We will be having a customer service office in the Lakes Region. We will be providing the same number of peg channels, the same number of origination locations. So I think those are kind of the other value adds that we put in there. Yep, video courtesy services, thank you. We'd be providing courtesy video services to city-owned buildings and schools.
And, you know, again, it's not in the franchise, but it's not in the franchise, Counselor, but we're bringing a whole different product suite and the mobile piece that doesn't exist, and, you know, that's outside of the purview of this, but it's a giant value add that we couldn't have offered, you know, several years ago. And there's another thing in the community investment side that I haven't talked to. It's called our Internet Essentials Program. So if you have a child in school that's either receiving free or reduced school lunch, they could be eligible for this broadband or high-speed Internet service at nine dollars and ninety-five cents a month. Also, they could be eligible to purchase a laptop computer for a hundred and fifty dollars, and they would have free access to digital training, online training, which is something that I can't think of any other companies in the country that offer it. It's one of our hallmark community investment programs that's been going on since two thousand and eleven. We have over sixty-five, there's over sixty, six thousand, I'm sorry, six million five hundred thousand U.S. residents that have benefited from this program since two thousand and eleven. So although it's not in the license, this is something that we've offered. It was supposed to sunset after four years. Again, that would have been in twenty fourteen to twenty fifteen, and we continue on with that, and we'll be doing that indefinitely. So we bring that to the table as well.
Along, if I, if I may, Mr. Mayor, along with our partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, I understand there's a Boys and Girls Club here in the city, and we have a strong national partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, and we are really excited that there is a Boys and Girls Club in Laconia. There wasn't one in Rochester, and in fact, I think we were, we were on the, I hate to call it the judgment, judgment panel, but when the local Boys and Girls Club had the State Youth of the Year, we were, we had that youth in for our newsmaker segment, put her up on TV, did an interview with her, and she was from Laconia. That was, I think, a year, eighteen months ago.
Counselor Lutman, follow-up?
I'd like you to, for the benefit of the public that's listening or here tonight, you make represent... you make representation about state-of-the-art. Can you distinguish in some term other than sort of a jargon that state, what state-of-the-art means for the public here in practical terms over what is available?
Yes, absolutely. So first, it's going to be a newer system, okay? It's, it's going to be a hybrid, fiber and coaxial cable. The difference is with this one, the, and I have to get technical because this is the only way I know how to talk to it, speak to it, is our nodes will be closer to the homes in the neighborhoods.
And what does that mean when that is the case?
So you're taking out actives, amplifiers and noise from the system, right? So when we talk about fiber optics, we're talking about the speed of light, okay? So it goes, travels from our head end at the speed of light to these nodes in the neighborhood, and then it's converted over to radio frequencies which hits the house. Now, it's important to know, even fiber to the premises, which you hear a lot about, those are still converted at the homes and go over a coaxial cable inside the home. It just happens closer to the home. So I guess the best analogy would be if you brought in a four-inch water pipe, water main to a home, home only has an inch or three-quarter, you know, pipe feeding the home. So it doesn't matter how much volume you come, you're bringing in. The home can only accept so much going through that three-inch or one-quarter pipe. So if you think bandwidth and things like that, your end-user equipment can only accept so much and the speeds can only be so quick. So I think that's the best analogy.
So translating what you just said.
Please do.
In terms of what you're offering, using the pipeline analogy, how is it different than what exists for consumers today in our community?
So I can't speak to the incumbent's infrastructure for many reasons, and I wouldn't do that. I can only speak to that we will be building a newer system.
So, so I guess what I'm trying to push you on a little bit is, is new really any better than what? Better than what? New is, new is new, but what does new really mean?
Well, newer electronics, when I say that, it's also a smart network. So routing of traffic and bandwidth, use of bandwidth, the efficiencies that we now drive with the next level of innovative equipment, it just helps everything go quicker.
I guess is the consumer going to see a difference in the devices that they watch cable TV on with what you're going to deliver? That's, I think.
Sure.
The way the consumer in Laconia would judge.
Yes.
As to whether it's better or not.
So what we have through our X1 platform, right? So you can get a remote control that you can speak into. And our, our system actually does some thinking for you with your favorites. If you tend to watch a certain thing, genre of programming, it will steer you that way if you want. You can go to your linear channels and use the remote however you want, but you can speak into it. Accessibility, so if you're blind, we have a talking guide now. So folks can actually hear what's going on, the Wizard of Oz. In fact, you can listen and it gives descriptions of colors and things like that. You can also watch programming over your handheld device, if you'd like, through our stream app. So if I wanted to pop up some programming that I'm interested in, I'm at the restaurant and the kids are getting a little crazy, they can watch it right on here, which is directly linked to your account.
Anywhere in the country.
Anywhere in the country. So there are a lot of add-ons and benefits to this newer technology.
Great, thank you. Counselor Hamel.
Yeah. Laconia in the Lakes region has PEG access. We have a station, TV station here in Laconia, that provides public and governmental and educational channels. Is that something you would do also?
Yep, it's definitely included in Section 6 of the franchise agreement. We would be providing the same number of PEG channels, public educational government access channels. We'd be providing the same origination locations. So, yeah, we would.
And it would be fiber? Is that what we have there?
Again, the system's not designed. The ones we're building elsewhere are definitely fiber. So I don't want to say it's going to be fiber because I don't know.
I bet you would provide that.
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you coming tonight. Before I open the microphone for general public comment, I'm going to ask if there's anyone with us tonight from the Atlantic Broadband Company. Would you like to speak, sir?
I'm Edward Merrill. I'm the general manager with Atlantic Broadband.
I'm Edward Merrill, and I'm the general manager with Atlantic Broadband. I'm responsible for the New Hampshire main operation.
Okay, did you have anything you wanted on the record at this point or?
Nope, I'm here to observe. And we're going to, our next step is to take a look at the final document, have our corporate people take a look of it, see if there's anything that's different than, that we feel is different. And then we get back to the city. We're, we are, have direct competition in many of our systems. Right here in New Hampshire, we have five communities where we directly compete with TDS, which is a telephone company which offers our same services. So we're, we understand competition. And our focus is on the customer, on our service that we provide, not on what other services are available. So we're going to continue with that. We're a brand-new company with Atlantic Broadband. We've done a lot of investments within the system. I think that you're going to see that our technologies are going to be very similar, what they offer.
Okay, any questions for this gentleman while we have him? All right, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to turn to public input at this point in time. And I would ask that you come to the microphone, identify yourself and where you live. If you live in the city of Laconia, we generally like to know what ward you live in for the record. And we typically, by rule, have a five-minute limit on speech. We rarely have to enforce that, but will if we have to. But I'd ask you to be courteous with, in that regard, and leave time for other people to speak as well. So is there anyone with us tonight who would like to address this particular issue to the council? Who's going to be first? Representative St. Clair.
Ward three, Charlie, St. Clair, thank you. I'm happy about competition. I've been hoping we'd have competition for cable television here ever, forever. And I'm glad that Atlantic is here too, to hear my comments. I hope that, that these, this new company takes care of public access television. I'm not saying that Atlantic doesn't, but I always seem to hear things, whether it's from the federal government or from just reading comments in the newspaper about how the cable television's, cable television cuts back, keeps cutting back on funding for public access. And it's so important for the community. And I think that Comcast would be well-advised to, to make that, make sure that that continues so we get that, those channels. I think they're watching us, or people are watching it right now on, on public access. The other thing is, I hope that after all this effort that this company is going to do, that the ratepayers will see true competition and competitive rates. In fact, maybe even lower rates. Because most people feel like they've got hands right around their throats when it comes to getting their television services. It's just the way it is. And I'm not talking about all the other gadgets that you can get, whether it's computer, internet or telephone service. I'm talking about just good old-fashioned television selections. It'd also be nice if somebody in Comcast, I don't know what they do around the country. My guess is maybe not what I'm going to say right now, but most consumers dream of the day that they can pick the television stations that they want to watch and be happy to pay for them and not have to look at all the other unnecessary programs, they feel unnecessary, that are offered to them. That would be, you talk about next generation, this and that, and you can be somewhere in the country and get on this. It'd be, it'd be nice just to be able to be home and say, I'm going to go to these channels that I want and not be paying for all this other stuff.
You're off the subject now.
Okay, I am?
Yes.
All right, well, that's what I hope they do, so.
This hearing has nothing to do with.
I know that, but they're here in the room, so I'm just, public hearing, so I'm, I'm voicing my opinion on that. So thank you very much. I know you guys are doing a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, who else would like to address the council on the matter of? Representative Spanos, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, I believe you're on the topic of Comcast coming into this territory.
Correct.
I'm a firm believer in the free markets. And as a cable subscriber, certainly, we would welcome competition. However, I have heard that Comcast is either unwilling or unable to allow emergency broadcasting on their network. I think that that is patently unfair to the current cable carrier, Atlantic. And I think it is somewhat jeopardous to the safety of the public at large. I believe that if they want to come to this area, I personally would welcome them with open arms. However, I would expect them to play by the same rules that Atlantic Broadband currently does. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who else? Anyone? Okay, I guess we've heard from everyone who wants to speak. So I'm going to declare this public hearing closed at 7:41 PM. And note again that we will be taking this matter up tonight, the actual vote, under unfinished business or the end of the meeting. All right, we have a second public hearing tonight. And this has to do with amending ordinance 2019-189-50-01 sewer charges. At the December 27, 2018 city council meeting, the council affirmed its decision to put forward a public hearing to the amendment to ordinance 18950 to include the following. The fixed yearly fee per unit shall be charged as follows. Effective bill date on or after February 1, 2020, $38.59 per quarter. Effective date, I'm sorry, I missed one. Effective date, bill date on or after, no, I'm sorry, I don't need to, we've already approved 2019, right?
Correct.
Yes, I'm sorry. So tonight, the hearing, we've already approved the rate for 2019 at $37.23 per quarter. What we're talking about tonight is changing that rate, effective February 1, 2020, to $38.59 per quarter. And then changing it on or after effective date, February 1, 2021, to $40 and, $40 even per quarter. And those charges are based on metered water consumption as of February 2020 of $5.38 per 100 cubic feet. That would be an increase from $5.20, which goes into effect in February of this year. And then again, changing it on February 1, 2021, from $5.38 to $5.57 per 100 cubic feet. And then subsection C, you'll bear with me here. This has to do with non-metered flat rates. Non-metered flat rates. With the billing date on or after February 1, 2020, the billing rate, non-metered rate would be $512 per unit, per year billed semi-annually. And with, and I'm confused here, excuse me, bear with me. I'm going to ask the manager to help me on this. I'm not, I'm not understanding the, where the punctuation is on this language.
Sure, so, so on the February 1, 2020 increase, Mayor, you had a correct $512 per unit billed semi-annually, meaning it would be $256 coming into bill twice a year.
Yeah, I hadn't gotten to the second number yet.
Correct.
Okay, I got you. Then February 1, 2021, the rate would go up to $530 per unit billed at $265 per unit semi-annually. Have I got that right?
Absolutely.
Yep. Okay. And again, we will take this matter up tonight under unfinished, the council will take this matter up tonight again, under unfinished business. So I'm going to, so those are the proposed rate changes for 2020 and 2021. And I'm going to open this public, oh, I'm sorry, I've got to read the notice. Notice of this public hearing was made available in the January 8, 2019 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at City Hall, at the Public Library, the Community Center and the SAU office. So I'm going to open this public hearing at 7:45 PM and ask if there's anyone in attendance tonight who would like to address the council. Same rules apply on the matter of sewer rate charges for 2020 and 2021. Anyone on those two subjects? No? Okay, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed at 7:46 PM. And again, note that the council will take this matter up tonight under unfinished business. Okay, we are to mayor's report. A couple of items tonight I'd like to touch on. One is to unfortunately acknowledge the passing of old friend Bill Tobin, resident of Sanmerton, who, who was engaged as much as one could probably possibly be in public life, both in his home community of Sanmerton. He represented Sanmerton and Tilton in the state legislature, held various offices and served on various committees over the year, over the years in, in his hometown. And he was well-known to us, well-known to City Hall, because on, on any number of occasions, Bill filled in for us as he was a building inspector by trade. And on any number of occasions, he filled in for us on a contract basis here at City Hall. So the people in, in the planning department and elsewhere in the City Hall were very familiar with Bill. And those of us who were privileged to know him can attest to the fact that there probably was never a finer gentleman in every sense of the word than Bill Tobin was. And I had the, had the honor of attending his memorial service. And the number of people who showed up for his memorial service and who spoke was a testament to the kind of man he is. So all of us wish our sincere condolences to his wife Faith and his family. And Bill will certainly be missed. The other thing I wanted to touch on here is later tonight, under new business, we're going to be discussing the Colonial Theater project. And I have one bit of, of happy news before we delve into all the financial details here. I'll pass some of these out, if you could pass that down. You may recall that when the, when the Bellknap Economic Development Council took ownership of the Colonial Theater in the summer of 2015, that one of the things that was discovered was that, that had been talked about to some length was whatever happened to, or what was the condition of the grand curtain that was part of the Colonial Theater from, from the outset. And everyone was delighted to find that that curtain was still there in the theater, hidden in its original place, but rolled up, tucked up underneath the, I forget what the fancy word for the, the framing of the theater is. But it was, it was rolled up and you got. But it was, it was rolled up, and you could only see like a foot or two of it that was hanging down. And it was decided at that point in time that the curtain was probably too valuable and perhaps too fragile to casually, to treat casually. And so, a decision was made at that point in time to leave it alone at this point in time, and wait for someone who knew what they were doing to, I think it was feared that it would be damaged, or if it was in bad shape, that it would make it worse if we tried to unroll it ourselves or whatever. So, for the last several years, it has remained in that position, and now, for whatever reason, it decided to unveil itself. And I don't know whether a gear broke, or something stripped, or whatever, but people went in the theater here a week or so ago to find that it had dropped into place from its rolled-up position at the top. And so, the photograph that you have in front of you there tonight is a photograph of the, of the theater curtain in place. As you can see, it's a, it's a painted, a painting of Venice, Italy. That dates back over 100 years now, painted on canvas, that's there, and we believe that curtain is probably pretty valuable, and it's, it's, I haven't seen it in person yet, but I'm told that it's, that it appears to be in excellent condition, that belies its years. So, this is quite a find to find that it really is still in good shape, and is something that will be treated very gingerly, and we'll get, BEDC will get some experts in there to take a look at it. And there may be some environmental issues, because in all probability, the back of it is probably coated in asbestos, since it was a fire curtain, and some other issues, environmental issues. But, so, good news on the colonial front, in that the curtain has obviously survived its long slumber, in good shape, and is certainly something that will be a treasured resource, a treasured asset for the city. And once the city takes ownership of the theater, obviously, it will become city property as well. So, that's part of our heritage there, if you will, and very valuable. So, I'll save the rest of the colonial for later on tonight. And move on to committee reports, any committee business tonight? I know that Counselor Hamel, you have scheduled a meeting for the Land and Buildings Committee, I believe, for, after our, before our next meeting, to discuss the Pearlie Pond maintenance issue, is that what that meeting's about?
Yes, January 28 at 6:00 PM.
At 6:00 PM, all right, so, if you're interested in the Pearlie Pond, and the maintenance of the Pearlie Pond area, the Land and Building Subcommittee will be meeting in this room at 6 o'clock on January 28 to take up that issue. How about liaison reports? Any liaison reports tonight? No? Okay. Next item on the agenda, item 18, is citizens request to comment on current agenda items. This is the appropriate time for anyone to come forward who wishes to address the council on any matter that is on tonight's agenda, is on tonight's agenda. Anyone care to do that, on any matter that is on tonight's agenda? Mr. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Cal Dunn. I'm a little confused, I'm not quite sure. I was going to speak in regards to emergency lanes, and I see that it looks like it's on the agenda under 16E.
On 16? Where are you saying that?
Under Public Works.
Yes.
Oh, under the committee business, okay, yeah, well, go ahead, it's, that's not scheduled to be discussed tonight, but, but.
So, I'm out of place again?
Technically only. Technically, you're out of place, but go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to comment, my comments purely, on the use of the emergency lane process, and especially in view what prompted it as the most recent acceptance of Pendleton Beach Road and Boathouse. I would like to say right off the bat that Counselor Hamel's approval rating has dramatically increased with me, as well as the distinguished David Bowns, Counselor Bowns, for vote no. Unfortunately, the newbies got it wrong. But the law defines emergency vehicles as EMS, fire, and police. I've never seen any Public Works vehicles that classify as emergency vehicles. In the Pomhouse Station, although if there was a failure, it probably would be an emergency, I don't believe it's in, within the statute of what you're using it for. And I just personally think that this has been abused, and it's not just, there's been many other cities and towns, but it's not the intent of the law. If you read it, there's no mention whatsoever of snow plowing to begin with, under the emergency lanes. They mention brush cutting and culvert installation and drainage, and I don't think much of that has ever been done on Trumont Street and Pickle Pond Road, Eastman Shore. You know, I think in my 46 years of road building and construction, a lane constitutes approximately 12 feet. Sometimes paved, sometimes not. It's not emergency roads that we're declaring here. I understand the city's position, and your backs up against the wall, but again, it's not roads. This, the intent is clearly for residential cities, towns, basically, Meredith, Guilford, Gilmington, Belmont, where the rural areas, they need to access, where they don't have hydrants, such as a city for water to fight fires, or ponds and rivers they use, and firefighting access for the wooded land. So, I just would like the city to reconsider its use of this, and the obvious way to go is the as-is declaration. After two years, you're informed that you can declare these roads city-accepted as-is, that a lot of them, they've been maintaining for 100-plus years. So, I think that would be the route to go, and this has been a two-year dilemma here, you know, ongoing, with this snow plowing, and it really kind of set me off, I had to speak, because I was here a year, year and a half ago, when the city manager and the Public Works Director basically pounded their fist and said, "There will be no public roads accepted under the emergency lane." No, excuse me, no private roads, none whatsoever, no exception. And then to learn this, and I guess, you know, I mean, come on, guys, there's plenty of places to suck water out of the lake, Boathouse Road, and to launch a dengue. It just was totally inappropriate, a road that the city has never, ever touched before. So, again, it just, I doubt very much if you'll hear from the Attorney General for, of New Hampshire, for improper use of the emergency lane, but as I said, two lanes generally constitute a road that you travel on here in the city. Two or more is an interstate. And a lane is a country walk down memory lane to me. So, I guess that's all that I have to add. It's just unfortunate, fortunately, I guess for the city, that the emergency lanes can be revoked at any time. So, I think it's opened up another agenda for the city. How many other places are we going to accept here and plow? I make it clear, I think that the roads that the city has been plowing should maintain that for the public and continue to do so. So, I thank you for your time, and have a great year.
Thank you for the input. Anyone else wish to address the council on a matter that is on tonight's agenda? If not, I'm going to move on to the city manager's report, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I get to the report that's included in your agenda, agenda packet, I would also like to formally welcome Glenn Smith to this meeting, to the public, as our finance director. Glenn started with us last Monday. He brings over 30 years of experience in municipal and county experience, both on the town, city, and county level, both in finance and in management, most recently coming from being the town administrator in the town of Northfield, just up the road for the last 11 years, and Glenn is a Laconia resident, so already, he's jumped in, and we're excited he's here, and we know that he's going to do a great job as being a part of our team. So, welcome, Glenn.
Thank you.
I told him we wouldn't put him on the spot for anything tonight, but in two weeks, he better be ready, that's what we said.
I was going to call for speech.
Well, I told him he has an opportunity when the mayor welcomed him, I said, "That was your chance for 20 minutes," and he shied away from it, so.
You have my chance.
There we go. So, on your agenda packet tonight, the report, beginning on page 18, so page one of the report at the top is our building permit value. So, we're through the month of December now, April 1 through December, so we're nine months of the way through the year. We're at $14 million, so we are lagging by several million dollars both of the prior years, and I think if we look back three years ago, we were somewhere higher than that as well. So, this tends to be a slower time of year for people pulling building permits in January and February, so I don't expect too much movement there. Sometimes we see an uptick in March, as the season hopefully starts to get a little warmer in the ground, maybe thinking about thawing. So, this is one of the components that the city uses in its tax cap calculation, the first one being the Consumer Price Index urban figure, which is the inflation number, and the second one being the building permit value of new building permits, less any demolition that occurs in the city. So, we'll continue to monitor that. Fire and rescue continue to be busy, you can look at the bottom column of that, that tallies yearly calls, and I think this is the first year that we surpassed 5,000 calls with the Department for Fire and EMS. I've shared with you a couple of times on the public assistance through our welfare office, that we are busy on a number of fronts for not a particular reason that we can put our finger on, but it just tends to be, has tended to be busy all year, not just seeing an uptick in the winter months. We were, we were busy through summer and fall as well, and it's for a number of requests that the, that the support from the city is being provided. If you turn the page, Police Department continues to be busy as well, you can see the breakdown of calls there. Property tax collection towards the bottom of the page. We are not quite representative of a full 2018 collection year, because tax bills were due on January 2. So, we did have some delays in the mail with the New Year's holiday and folks coming in on the final day. So, through December 31, we'll be tallied, we're at 88% collected. I expect that number to bump up by a few percentage points by the time we include the January figures in for the report next month for you. So, even though on paper, the number looks low, there's no concern on our end for that right now. Motor vehicle registration at the bottom of the page continues to run slightly ahead of projections, and even ahead of last year's pace. So, we're running just short of 53% of collected, and again, we're six months through the year right now, so again, we are running ahead of projections. You can see the overtime by all departments on page 20, nothing jumping out there that stands out on any of the fronts, but I'm happy to take any questions that anybody may have there. We have reconciled without further action a couple of the grievances that were pending, so we're down to just the one pending grievance that's there listed before you. There were no changes to anything regarding impact fees or expenditures of the trust, so I'm going to turn you to page 22 of the agenda, page five of the report for a little bit here, and then we'll focus on the last page. Just a reminder, we're in the new calendar year now, so boat rentals, sorry, boat registrations are ready to roll for folks who want to register their boats. The city of Laconia is a registered boat agent, meaning we can register a boat for anyone who wants to register a New Hampshire boat. You don't just have to be a Laconia resident to come into City Hall, they'd be happy to see your smiling faces if you want to do your boat registration. So, we encourage people to utilize City Hall. If you're doing it locally, more of the dollars collected do stay with the city, versus registering it through the mail or online with the state. The state does take a larger piece, so if folks truly want to support registration locally, we encourage they do it through one of the boat dealers or here at City Hall as a way they can do that. Draw your attention to the EMS billing history. So, we've actually been digging into this quite a bit, because I had expected the July figure to be higher than the 59% level it is right now. And actually, you can see the August figure of collections is actually one percentage point higher, we've collected 60%. So, we did a conference call last week with staff from the Fire Department, as well as our collection agency, got into the weeds a little bit. I still am not concerned over where we are at that level, and I'll kind of speak to the reasons, and that will help you get to where I'm thinking on this right now. But we've collected just about 75,000 of our net charge for July, which leaves about $43,000 outstanding. We do have one large insurance company in the state who, we are getting some challenges in getting payments, and I just think this is a method of how they operate in communities across the state, and it's just a slow struggle, it's not something we're giving up on, but it is Anthem, New Hampshire, that we're having challenges with getting collection. I'm happy to report, New Hampshire Medicaid and Medicare are very rapid payers, so there is good systems in place with those entities there. And so, we're really dealing with some of the private pay, folks who don't have insurance, and also some of the insurance companies. So, we're digging into that, we had one glitch in the ways, some information was set up at the computer with one of the vendors. We just straightened that out within the last couple of weeks, so we expect that pipeline of money to start coming in quicker now. We did have some money in what's referred to as the lockbox, where some of these insurance companies pay into it. That was, I refer to that as an orphaned account, money came in, but for whatever reason, it didn't have the right invoice billable number to it and stuff. So, we've noticed there's some money there that hasn't flowed out and been charged against some of the bills that were, that were sent, and we're working to identify what monies, those invoices, or those, what invoices those monies should be applied against. So, I do truly expect by the time we look at this bill, this report next month at this time, that we'll be at a solid place. To make the numbers work, big picture, and why I'm still not concerned at this point, is of the 43,000 that's due, more than half of that is due from insurance companies, and we have billed at the net charge, not the gross charge. So, all of that money, minus maybe some small write-offs that may occur, should be very solid money coming into it. Also, on an annualized basis, we budgeted conservatively for a million dollars in revenue coming in over the 12 months. So, if you break that down on how much do we have to receive on a monthly basis in order to hit the million dollars at the end of 12 months, it's about $86,000 or $87,000 a month. So, the fact that we've collected 75,000 of July billables means we're only 12,000 short of hitting the target. Not that we're not going to continue to be going after all that's owed to us, but the likelihood of being at a 100% success rate is not a realistic expectation. But I do fully expect that we will hit the $87,000 on an average monthly basis, and then some. You can see, and again, I don't know why, on the August number has already exceeded, even though the billables were relatively similar, we're already at $82,000, almost $83,000 on the August number. So, it's something that we are actively engaged in on a weekly basis. Again, it's new to the city with doing the billing and the receivables. The company we're working at has had a long record in New Hampshire with some larger departments. They certainly have the wherewithal, the knowledge, and the understanding of some of the different insurance payers within the state. So, happy to take any questions on that when I finish on the last page of the report, which is the winter maintenance, the public works summary, the cost of all of our snow, ice, rain, sanding, salting events. We didn't have a lot of, probably didn't have any big events in December, but we had a lot of small events, and anybody who was out there shoveling or snowblowing, I think the snow blowers are more like putting out ice cones or something, it was so slushy out there. But, so a lot of that heavy wet rain, some freezing afterwards and stuff, so you can see the expenditures there. You know, being at, through December 31, we've still got a couple of months of winter in front of us, but I don't have any concerns at this point, unless something very unusual happens weather-wise going forward. The last thing I want to bring to your attention tonight is some of you may have seen it in emails and the Laconia links, in paper copies in all city departments. But we've been putting out a customer service survey since November. My assistant Nancy Brown put together a great, simple trifold, what department did you visit, the name of the person who provided service to you. Did you leave with the answer that you, or did you leave with an answer? Did you have to come back for any reason? Can you rate your visit? Those types of things. So again, folks could fill them out electronically. It was in the Laconia links, or there were paper copies. We received almost forty of the, of the customer service surveys back. The majority of them were City Hall-related functions, whether it was in the clerk's office, tax collector's office, assessor. A few have come from other departments. I can tell you, and I have them in my office, if anybody would like to see them, but overwhelmingly, very, very positive response to our staff and the city, and they do a great job. And we're getting that response from the customers. Folks can put their names down, the ones filling out the survey if they choose to. They can remain anonymous if they want to, so, but even the anonymous ones are saying very positive things. And then obviously, if people are putting their names, you know, they're, they're welcoming, you know, that being known to us as well. So want to share that. Kudos to the staff for what they do across all departments, even though the majority of the responses came from here in City Hall. And with that, I'll take any questions anyone may have tonight.
Questions or comments for the manager? Counselor Hamel?
I just have one, Scott. It's, it's under the expendable trust balances. The latest one I have, I mean, the late, the earlier one that I have is nine thirty of eighteen. And under the Bike Week funds, we've had fifty-four thousand to fifty-six. I notice on this one, we have a hundred and seven thousand.
Let me check into that. I know we've done, we've, we've had some transition, obviously, in the finance department and some things posting at different times, so let me firm up that.
Because usually that account, nothing's added other than vendor fees that aren't expended.
Correct. I, I think we probably had, and I don't know if it was after the September timeframe you're referencing. I know we had one check that came in through that fifty-year trademark licensing agreement that the council approved earlier this year. I'd have to look at the timing of where that check came. I know we had some bills that got paid out of there in conjunction with the renewals of the various trademarks that we're working with, with legal counsel on with that. So let, let me double-check that. There have been a lot of moving parts in the finance department and.
I, I just didn't want, I figured that wasn't true.
No, let me, let me square that up for you, and I can get back to you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Anyone else question or comments? No? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're moving on to new business. We have four items, new business to discuss tonight. First up is a request established rental fees for the, for the boardwalk in Weir's Boulevard.
We have some spaces on Weir's Boulevard that we have not rented in my time here, but they are available rental spaces. By the little kiosk area.
By the, what, where the chamber you said?
The chamber has the booth there, that city-owned property there.
Not a big demand for that.
Not in the last seven years anyway, but they're still available for a good price.
Okay. Anyway, we're talking about setting, establishing rental fees for Boardwalk and Weir's Boulevard vending spaces for Motorcycle Week two thousand and nineteen. And I'm assuming what's proposed here are no changes?
No changes from last year. I believe we went up on the fees by two hundred and fifty dollars two years ago, if my memory serves me correct. And this would allow the setting of the rates so that Nancy and my office can set up the renewals for the city spaces as listed here and get letters out.
So the rates you have published there in front of you on page twenty-four are the same as were changed, charged last year.
Correct.
Any questions or comments? Counselor Hamel?
The only comment I, I want to do is that if, if we remember, last year, we came in as a, of a deficit of like nine thousand dollars that we had to pay out from that account. So if that account keeps dwindling, then it's got to, the charges for the event has to fall somewhere. And this council, and the previous council, said that it would not become part of the tax rate anymore, where at one time, the taxpayers were paying quarter of a million dollars for Bike Week.
There were a lot of fine lunches provided in that.
It was. So, so anyway, we decided.
Somebody on this council might have participated in those lunches.
No clue.
I had no clue either.
So anyway.
But they were good, Mayor.
Just so that the council knows, it's starting to cost us money to do Bike Week.
I'm sorry? I didn't hear the last sentence.
I said, "It's starting to cost more money to do Bike Week than what the vendor fees provide."
So are you suggesting we raise fees or you're just commenting?
Just commenting. You know, it, what's happened is the, the total number of vendors have gone down tremendously over the ten-year period, the fourteen-year period. We, we used to have, you know, surpluses of money where we bought cruisers and, you know, all kinds of things, you know, things that we bought with that money.
Were we sold out on spaces last year, other than the, on the boardwalk spaces?
We were, and the majority of them were renewals from several years back. So I'd say we have very little turnover space on the city spaces on the boardwalk.
Now, what about that? I don't see the, didn't we make an arrangement with somebody last year for space on the street itself? Or are you counting that as boardwalk?
No, that would be a separate item that comes to you for approval to lease the space on the street. So I know there's one longtime vendor who provides, I believe the amount is twenty thousand dollars. And last year, there was another vendor who the council authorized a tent, a booth on the street for, for a lesser dollar amount for lesser space. But that's not included. So this is strictly for the, the vendors on the boardwalk.
Okay. A motion being ordered to approve rental rates for Laconia Motorcycle Week two thousand and nineteen vending spaces located on the boardwalk and on Weir's Boulevard as presented. Someone care to make that motion? Counselor Hosmer, is there a second? Counselor, Counselor Hamel seconds that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that motion carries. Thank you. Next up, under new business, is approval for an easement for the, for Wildwood Village dam pipe. That's on, it starts on page twenty-five of your packet, and I will ask the manager for an explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an existing condominium association that has a large drainage retention pond that flows under, through a culvert under Linwood Road, and then meanders through some wet area and makes its way down to Lake Winnisquam. I'd hazard a guess that this association was built probably in the nineteen eighties. And at that point, the whole culvert and the drainage all existed the way it did. There was a need for that association, at their cost, to replace the culvert and, and some of the drainage operations this year. And coming into it, when we went to wrap it up, we realized that back in the nineteen eighties, there was never an easement. So we're looking to establish these, and now just as more of a technical housekeeping need, the project is complete. The project was completed back in the eighties, and this was just an oversight back then. So again, the association paid for it. The project went very well. But we're just looking to have this updated so that we've got a proper easement on file.
Any questions? Okay. A motion being ordered for the city council to approve the proposed easement to the Wildwood Village Condominium Association for a drainage pipe in the city right-of-way and authorize the city manager to sign the easement. Counselor Lippman makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Haynes seconds that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. Next up is a request to approve no parking on Clinton Street. That's on page twenty-eight. Clinton Street, I'm sure you all are familiar, leads to Counselor Bowns's residence. Or one of the two ways of getting to Counselor Bowns's residence, I guess. Comes off of, of Mechanic Street in the area there of Sanborn Park. And it does not say who, so there, the recommendation is to ban on-street parking between eighty-eight Clinton Street and one-twenty-six Clinton Street, where the street heads uphill sharply. It does not say who's, who requested this.
I believe it was Public Works requested it because they ran into challenges with trying to properly maintain that because of the steepness of the grade and also on the bank being there, water seeping back out and, and freezing and trying to work around cars at the same time you're going up that grade.
Do we have any input as to who's parking there on the street?
I will defer to the, ask the Public Works Director to come to the podium if we can.
It's one of the two houses that's rental property just at the corner. I don't know if it's eighty-eight or the next one up.
Is that on, right on the hill?
It's right where you, it's on the hill, but just as you make the corner left to go up to the steep portion. They're parking on the opposite side or the, the uphill side of that road.
And do you have a, do you have a, an opinion as to, is there adequate private parking there to handle those vehicles or?
They, they get off the road during the nighttime, you know, when we have the no parking ban already in place, so it can be done. I think part of the problem is it's during the daytime, is the cars moving in and out to make sure everyone can clear, get out and go to work. It tends to be daytime only that we have the issue.
At nighttime, the parking restriction is citywide, so it's not.
And there's two buildings that are involved.
Correct.
Counselor Lippman has a question.
Has there been any discussion with the residents?
They have not been.
Are the owner of the building?
They have not been at this time, partly because, I'll say, it really makes common sense. If you lose traction coming down or up that hill, you're gonna go into the, whatever car's parked on the road there.
So you're looking for no parking on the hill itself?
On the hill itself.
Both sides?
Both sides. No one's probably gonna park on the side with a guardrail because there's just no room. It's the side that has the, the steep hill going up, just as you're going past that last house on the right before you climb.
Can, um.
What it's worth, I spoke to Counselor Bowns earlier this evening, and we didn't, we talked about this briefly. He did not offer any objection to it.
You ought to do a public hearing on it or something instead of vote right away.
Yeah, I, I guess I, I understand if we have a winter problem of doing something temporarily, a temporary ban on it until, I do think the parties who live there ought to have a chance to be able to be noticed and speak to it.
If you want, we could table this tonight rather than do a public hearing and just specifically notice the couple of residents along the way with a letter that we can get out this week to them and let them know that this wasn't an agenda item and it was being tabled. And if they wish to speak to a no parking twenty-four hours a day, we would continue this on to the January twenty-eighth agenda.
I am sensitive to the Public Works having an issue over the next sixty days or so. So can we do a temporary parking?
Could we do the police no parking sign like we did at Elm Street School?
Sure, if that's the direction of the council, we can put temporary no parking. And we could still table the main motion tonight and put a letter out and let people know that, come to the twenty-eighth if you want to offer comment.
Because it says storms coming in this weekend.
Yeah, I, I don't think we need to advertise it as a full, a, a public hearing requires a full notice, whatever. I think we table it and notify the few affected people would be my suggestion.
Would you do that?
Yes. I think that, that way we deal with the current problem and, and give them a chance.
So the motion would be to table, but to put the temporary no parking signs up as staff time allows this week, and then notify a butters that this will be referred to the twenty-eighth agenda.
All right. So the first motion that would be in order would be to approve a temporary non-parking zone on both sides of Clint Street from the west boundary of eighty-eight Clinton Street to the east end of intersection of Clinton and Prospect Streets to cover January fifteen through January twenty-eight.
That'll be our next meeting, yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Counselor Lippman makes that motion?
Yes, please.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Counselor Hosmer seconds that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Thank you. All right. Then Counselor Lippman also moves to table item twenty C and to place on the agenda for our meeting on the twenty-eighth of January under unfinished business. Second that one? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor of tabling this to twenty-eighth, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so we are, that's one more item of new business, and that is the Colonial Theater project. As I mentioned at our last meeting, my intent tonight was to give you a thorough report of the Colonial Theater project. And before the meeting began, I distributed to you a short stack of papers that I will be referring to. I think it's three pages. And this, this is a fair warning that, that there's a fair amount of detail in this, and it's, it's, it can be confusing, to say the least. It's certainly been confusing to Counselor Hamel and myself, sitting through many meetings on this subject and whatnot. And it's taken some effort to, to understand exactly what's going on in the various proposals, the ramifications of those proposals. So I will not be in the least bit offended if you stop me at any point if something is not clear to you and, and you wish further explanation or have a question, feel free to do that, or you can save them up to the end. It's up to you. I will not be the least bit offended, as I said, to be interrupted. And to use a trite expression, there's no such thing as a stupid question. Counselor Hamel and I have asked many stupid questions on this subject matter over the last few months and.
Still are.
And, and are still asking them on a, on a weekly basis. So some of these concepts are a little hard to, to, to get one's mind around. I will remind you that the Colonial Theater, by way of background, it's been unbelievably, already four years since, since we started down this road officially. I believe it was four years ago this month. I might be off by a month or so that I can recall attending my first official meeting on this at the, that BEDC hosted at the, at Church Landing, where Jack Dugan from the Monadnock Development Company explained to a pretty good-sized crowd of people that day the concept of the New Markets Tax Program and, and provided the first outline about how that program might be used as a foundation for renovating the Colonial Theater. And that was, that was four years ago. And it was before years ago this summer that the city loaned one point four million dollars to Belknap Economic Development Council to actually purchase the theater building property from Mrs. Baldi. So BEDC has had title to that property now before years this July. And, and the, the BEDC has been paying rent at the rate of four thousand dollars a month, rounded off to the city for three and a half years now for that property, so, already. So anyway, as a reminder, the, the, the project, as it had been going, collapsed last June when, when Laconia people, including myself, learned that the only community development entity in the state of New Hampshire, Mascoma, a division of Mascoma Bank in Hanover, had failed to secure a, an allotment of New Markets tax credits for the current year. And therefore, none of that money was going to be available to the Colonial Theater project. And the, the prospect of getting that at a future date looked iffy at best. And the whole project was in, in, in immediate jeopardy of, of, of failing. And at that point in time, the city council, when appraised of the situation, asked the Belknap Economic Development Council, as our partners in this project, to form an oversight committee, sort of a task force, if you will, to deal with this emergency and come up with some sort of alternative plan and whatnot for trying to advance the project. And BEDC agreed to do that, and a Colonial Project Oversight Committee was formed. And Counselor Hamel and myself have represented the city on that committee over these past months. And I can tell you that at the last meeting we had last week, someone had added up the meetings we had held and determined that, to date, that committee has met twenty-six times since last summer. And that doesn't count, that doesn't include some unofficial meetings as well, meeting with outside parties and that sort of thing. Don't, don't, haven't, not counted in that, but with the exception. But with the exception of a couple of holidays, I think the committee has met at least once a week uh, since its formation. And continues to do so. We'll meet again on Wednesday of this week. And uh, so I wanna give a, a, a shout out uh, to an extraordinary effort. The committee is chaired by Gary Grolo. I know many of you know Gary. Laconia native and uh, he has, has, he accepted the assignment of chairing the committee and, and uh, dove into it as much as anyone uh, could and uh, has, has been exemplary, uh, an exemplary chairman and has kept us on task and organized. And the other people who have served on that committee, who have been the uh, the core of it, uh, and have, have contributed greatly include Andrew Pike, uh, Randy Eifert, Gracie Silly, Chris Kelly, uh, Jen Anderson and Justin Slattery. So that's basically the core group there that has been meeting every week for many months now to try to come to grips with this program, uh, with this issue. Our jumping off point for the committee was to remind you, at the time, a seventeen point two million dollar project with Mascoma Savings Bank, the CDE, saying it would not take more than eleven or twelve million dollars of that project on, in terms of sponsoring New Market Tax Credits. And it wanted no part of the residential portion of that project as defined at that time, which was fourteen apartments on floors two and three of the Main Street Building. The city's commitment at that point in time via a vote of the City Council in September of two thousand and seventeen, a year and a half ago now, was for a four point two million dollar loan that would turn into outright ownership of the theater and related amenities after a seven-year wind down period. That's required by federal law. The city additionally agreed to pay, as of September two thousand and seventeen, a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars a year in rent to Belknap, to the developer, Belknap Economic Development Council, and to pay all utilities related to the theater project. So that was, the total project was a seventeen point two million dollar project and the city agreed to, to uh, fund it to the extent of four point two million dollars. That was our jumping off point. The, soon after the committee started meeting, the residential component of the project, the second and third floors of the Main Street Building were identified as a problem area. And a decision was made to look at commercial uses for that second and third floor, potential commercial uses instead of residential uses. Because it was determined from conversation with Mascoma and others that we were gonna have a, a devil of a time finding another CDE who would take on the financing for the residential portion of that project. Uh, the New Markets Tax Credit Program nationally, we're told, is really a commercial program, federal program, uh, that wasn't designed in the first place to do residential projects and most of the people who were in that business don't wanna, don't wanna take on residential projects. So that seemed to be an issue. Further, uh, it was identified that as much as two million dollars of the construction budget for the project was devoted to building those fourteen apartments that were planned for the second and third floors. And yet those apartments were going to generate a gross income of only a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year and a net income of well less than fifty thousand dollars a year. So it was like, we're gonna spend two million dollars building these apartments that are going to contribute not very much to the bottom line. And uh, you know, the, I think we're kinda looking at it then, once we looked at it closer, of saying that this doesn't make much economic sense and no private developer would ever do that to put two million dollars into a project that's gonna return that little money uh, on the bottom line in terms of rent. And that rent was forecasted at market spaces, at, at market rates, I'm sorry. So Mascoma was approached uh, by me, uh, speaking with Dick Jennings, uh, who is the uh, managing director of the community development entity at Mascoma Savings Bank. And I spoke with him, uh, I started speaking with him in early September about what direction we might take to improve our odds of getting a uh, to, to getting back in favor, if you will, on the preferred list of possible uh, targets for New Market Tax Credits uh, that they would allocate. And uh, when I told him that we were considering uh, jettison, jettisoning the residential portion of the project, he was very enthusiastic about that and, and said, obviously it's your call, not ours, but we don't have any interest in including it in the project from our standpoint. And I think it would improve the uh, the overall rating, whatever you wanna call it, how favorably we would look upon the project if the residential portion of that went away. And so, uh, what you have in your packet there tonight is a copy of correspondence uh, from Dick Jennings to me in an informed email dated September twenty-fifth of this year. I have highlighted the, the uh, for you in yellow, the important passages. Number one, basically this is a follow-up to a verbal conversation the two of us had. And in the first highlighted sentence, you can see, he says, I have indicated the Colonial Theater Project is the first project on Mascoma Community Development's Priority Pipeline List if we win another New Market Tax Credit Allocation Award. In other words, he was saying to us in writing here, if they get an award, we're the first project they're going to look at in terms of funding. So that was very good news and much better news than we had gotten from Mascoma just a few months earlier. And then the second statement he made, uh, which is highlighted there is, I've indicated to you that if Mascoma Community Development receives a new award in an adequate amount, they've asked for fifty million dollars, we are willing to consider an allocation amount not to exceed fifteen million dollars. So originally, you'll recall, they said to us that they would consider an allocation of eleven or twelve million dollars, but not including anything having to do with residential. So basically what he was saying here is if you turn this into a all-commercial project, we would go as high as fifteen million dollars. Okay, well, that was a huge deal to us, to the community, because it meant that we didn't have to go looking for another source of income, a second CDE and whatnot, that if we kept the budget at fifteen million dollars or lower, that Mascoma would pick up the whole thing and we wouldn't have to find another partner on this, which was gonna be problematic at best from what we could determine. So as a basis of what's in this letter and the result, and the related conversations, we set internally a target that the project needed to be at fifteen million dollars or less. And, and that, using their jargon here, that's in the business, and that business is called a Q E I, a qualified uh, equity investment. That's, that's the terminology they use. And to remind you of how that works is, when I said earlier that they got, that they're looking for a fifty million dollar allocation, that doesn't, from the Treasury Department, that doesn't mean fifty million dollars in cash. They don't have fifty million dollars in cash. They have fifty million dollars in Q E I, if you will. The actual cash is roughly a third of that. So if they say that you get a fifteen million dollar allocation, that means you get about five million dollars of actual cash invested in your project. Okay, so that, just to make sure we're on the same wavelength terminology wise. So a fifteen million dollar commitment from them to us for allocation equates to about a little under five million dollars in terms of actual cash. And I'll get, you'll see that in a minute, how that falls into the, into paying for this. So as I said, that became the target then, uh, and, and about what our budget was. So if you look at the second page in the handout I gave you, the middle column, the one that has the yellow line drawn through it, is the current as of today, although it's dated November fourteenth. That is our current budget that we're operating in under as of right now. And I'm sorry, the type is so small, we all struggle with this, but you will see at the very top of that, that our construction budget now is a hair under nine point five million dollars. Okay? So that's, that's where the construction budget is, that's several million dollars less than it was the last time we talked to you about this. Okay, so now it's down to nine point five million dollars. We needed to get it down to nine point five million dollars to fit the whole project and all the related soft costs for the project. We needed to get the hard cost down under ten million dollars. And, and if you look on the far right, the box there, on the far right, uh, that is the history of the hard cost. You will see that the gross maximum price, the first line on the budget, started at just under thirteen million dollars. And, and the last time we went through this exercise in two thousand and seventeen, when the bids came in way over that, we had to cut two point seven million dollars out of that budget, uh, to get it down into the, the ten million dollar range. And, and when you add it in, the, the, the one point two million dollars, that's online, the, like the fourth line down, one point two million dollars. That's the one point two million dollars the, the City Council voted to, to add to the city's contribution to the project that made the total. The original commitment was for three million dollars. That one point two million dollars is what brought the total up to its current place of one point, of four point two million dollars. Okay, now, I'll get back to this in a minute, but it's important to note that of that one point two million that the count, that the council agreed to add to the city's contribution in September of two thousand and seventeen, included eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars worth of theater equipment. That's lighting, sound equipment and stage rigging totaling, totaling uh, just under nine hundred thousand dollars. The remaining balance to get up to one point two million dollars was to restore amenities, if you will, I have a list of those, uh, to the project that had been cut out in the, in the so-called value engineering stage. For example, the, the, the uh, theater had been stripped down to plywood floors in the auditorium and we added back in hardwood floors, uh, at, as part of that three hundred thousand dollars of miscellaneous expense we added. Basically, we, the council felt that, that, I know several of you were not on the council at that time, the council in two thousand and seventeen felt like the cuts that were made had cheapened the project to an unacceptable level and we added three hundred thousand dollars of general expense back in to, to add back in some of the items that had been cut from the budget, uh, to get it in line. So the, the, the next line there, eleven point four million dollars, that's where we were the last time we talked, as far as what the construction budget was. Then you'll see from that, we saved the aforementioned one point four million dollars by deciding to mothball, if you will, the second and third floors. So that's the, that's the savings that we have done since we last talked to you here. We took out those fourteen apartments. And what that does to the building, and this is, need to understand this, is by mothballing, it makes, this plan makes no changes to the exterior of the building in terms of improvements. The roof will still get fixed, the front of the building will still be fixed, everything that was planned to be spent on the exterior of the building will still be done. The whole envelope will be improved. As, as well as the contents of the second and third floor, excluding of course the load-bearing walls, will be gutted. And a sprinkler system will be put in, an emergency lighting system will be put in. Basically, it will be a ship-shaped warehouse space, if you will, with no improvements to it. But the, the demolition work will be done in this budget. So someone who might look at either renting or buying the second and third floors at, at a future point would be looking at, at the secure envelope of the building itself, plus the demolition work on the second and third floor and the sprinkling and emergency lighting already in place. Okay, so that's the condition the building would be in. So we saved one point four million dollars by doing that. We also uh, had been identified for us a three hundred and fifteen thousand dollar savings in the proposed HVAC system. And the removal of the eight hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred dollars that were in the budget for theater equipment, that was taken out for purposes of this budget. Okay, and then we added in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars because if the, if the second and third floor are used for any purpose other than residential, there has to be a second staircase and that wasn't in the plan. The reason that it wasn't required for residential has nothing to do with safety, had to do with code, because it was not being, it was already residential. Code did not require that it be updated with a second staircase. So, so the, if it's, if it's something other than residential, a second staircase would have to be added and we budgeted two fifty for that. And then the final factor was the, the bids, if you will. You might recall that the, the, this project was put out to bid two years ago, March of two thousand and seventeen. And so the prices we have are now almost two years old, just shy of two years old. And in conversations with Monet Page and Stone, the general contractor on the project, they indicate, so the question is, well, obviously we're gonna have to rebuild this project because the, the, the winning bidders are not gonna hold the price they gave us two years ago. They're gonna wanna reexamine that. So we asked Monet Page and Stone for a number about what sort of inflation factor we needed to add and we jointly came up with the number of, of uh, five percent. So Monet Page and Stone tends, intends this winter, spring to rebid the project and get new numbers for all of this, but we're, we're thinking at this point in time that the five hundred thousand might even be a little bit conservative because the, the, we're being told that the market has softened uh, a bit from what it was two years ago in terms of contractors looking for work. So it's possible that we might be in pretty good shape there. Uh, we don't, we won't know that until we actually get the bids. But I don't think there's any fear, uh, significant fear that we'll be, that we'll be out of line in terms of the bids coming in way over again. So you add all that stuff up, uh, all those additions and subtractions in that box there and you come up with the, the current construction budget of nine point five million dollars. Okay? Now importantly, to where I'm headed tonight is the fact that at nine point five million dollars, this project, this budget, does not include any equipment for the theater. None. No sound, no lighting, no rigging. Okay?
When you say lighting, Mayor, you're talking about theater lighting.
Stage lighting.
Stage lighting.
Yeah. Yeah.
You get a candle as you go in.
Yeah, presumably there are lights in the bathroom and, and other things like this, yes, but there's, so that was taken out of the budget to get it down to the nine point five million dollars. Alright, so then you can see that the rest of the soft costs there add up to four point five million dollars. And then we have the purchase of the building itself is there listed for one point nine million dollars and some other things. And I can get into that if you want, I'll be happy to. You know that we bought, they actually bought the building for one point four million, so why is it listed for one point nine million? Council Hamel is, is looking at the ceiling at this point because this is one of the places where it starts to get fun. And, and I don't wanna get too lost in the weeds here, uh, but be happy to try to answer questions if you have some on this idea, uh, on this issue. Money was, for the purposes of this budget, money was created, expenses were created, if you will, in this budget for the sole purpose of attracting more New Market Tax Credit investment. Meaning that the New Market credit or investment that you get is dependent on the cost of the old, the qualified cost, this Q E I, of the total project. So the higher the project gets, the more money you get in the forms of, of investment from the tax credits. But we're keeping in mind that our target is fifteen million dollars because that's what Mascoma has agreed to, to, to limit it at. So the closer we can come to fifteen million dollars is the way we would maximize the amount of tax credits. is the way we would maximize the amount of tax credits we could get. After that, we can't use them because Mascoma wouldn't go beyond the total allocation amount of fifteen million dollars, as they told us. So one of the ways that manifests itself is to, in effect, make up expenses and add them to the soft costs, and then take that money that's been added and loan it back into the project on the, on the funding end of things. So, so I put in the budget, well, let me give you an example. There's, there's a good example here. If you look on the list of soft costs here, you will see, where is it? Developer fee, about two-thirds of the way down, one million dollars. Okay. So that indicates that the developer of the project, which is the Economic Development Council, is gonna get a million dollars. They're, they're charging a million dollars for their services for this project. But now if you go back down underneath, at the bottom, where you have the funding stack, the income side of things, you will see an item down there, developer loan, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Okay. So bear with me here. What that means is, is the developer's going to charge the project a one million dollar fee, but they're gonna loan seven hundred and twenty thousand of that fee back into the project as income at zero interest, and at the end of the project, they're gonna forgive the loan. So it'll cost nothing. So the difference between the million and the seven twenty is basically a made-up number to attract more tax credit money. It really isn't.
Legal?
Oh, it is legal.
We have been assured that it is.
I, I, that was, that would just be my question, right? I mean, I'm very concerned about that.
That's a fair question, and the two of us have asked it many times. And everyone else in the room has asked many times, is this legal? You know, can you really do this? And the answer is yes. So the real developer fee is the difference between a million and seven twenty. It's not a million dollars. The balance of it's just made up to attract more tax credit money. And there are, there are other instances. So the building price is the same thing. The building price, they paid one point four million dollars for the building. They're going to sell it, that's owned now by a LLC owned by Belknap Economic Development Council. That LLC is going to sell it to another LLC at the closing for one point nine million dollars, is what this budget, which creates a profit of four hundred thousand dollars, which is going to be lent back into the, into the project again.
Mayor, if I could, I, I don't, I think in terms of what you're saying, that the, the value that's put on the various things has to be pegged to something. It just can't be making up a number in, in terms of it to be a technically correct transaction.
Yeah, I, I don't want to imply that you can just say, well, the developer fee is gonna be twenty million dollars, and you just invented twenty million.
So there has to be a market relationship.
There has to be a credibility factor here.
So there is, there is a legitimately had developer fee given a four-year pathway to getting there. There is a legitimate fee to carrying cost of.
I'm just trying to.
I just, I just wanna make sure you're not leaving the wrong impression that, that anything nefarious or improper.
It's all perfectly legal.
Okay. But I also, it's not just technically legal. It's, it's within a market value that a third party has to. The lending agency has some credibility here, too, with respect to how they're lending money.
And the investor, the investor, the eventual investor in the, that, that invests the money, which is typically a large bank, has to sign off on the overall structure as well. That it has to have, it has to pass a smell test that this is credible.
So my, my question, Mayor, is that at closing, it's gonna be sold to another investor? So there's a, there's a.
Another developer.
Another developer.
Yes.
So I'd hate to be at the closing table and find out that other developer isn't there, for whatever reason, and then find out that either this whole project is scotched or the project's gonna go forward and the city's gonna be on the hook for money that it didn't anticipate being on the hook for. So I guess, I appreciate the work that you have all put into this and the explanation tonight. The more that I think, as a counselor, that I could get in writing about the structure of this deal from an attorney who is making representations and interpreting the law to make sure that not only are we technically within the law, but we're certainly within the spirit of the law as well, that would make me feel more comfortable. This isn't my specialty, I don't think it's any of our specialties here, and I know we wanna do the right thing by the city and certainly by the theater.
All right. So, so what I would, what I would, my response to that would be that, that we would, we would, other than the one point four million dollars, which we already have, are at risk for, that we already put up four years ago, three and a half years ago, that no more city money would be invested in this project until closing. And there's, there's no way that the city, as an entity, would show up at that closing without knowing all the information that you have asked for. In other words, it would all be done ahead of time. It wouldn't, we would, we would not get to the table with any mystery, or we wouldn't be at the table.
Sure.
And, and now what you have brought up that I have, that I don't think we've talked about before, and perhaps the council would wanna consider this, is that there's, there's a lot of money in this project for legal fees, but, oh, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But none of that, as it's presently construed, would be paid out to attorneys hired by the city to look out for its interests. Now, there are contracts involved that involve the city. And those contracts, which are being drafted now under the leadership of the city manager, are being reviewed, obviously, and will be reviewed by the city attorneys. But if, if the city wants a broader opinion, if you will, from a New Markets expert or something like that, that's not in the budget, and that's, if we wanted that, that's something that we could, we could, we could contract out ourselves, if you will, to have to, once the, once the whole package is finalized or pretty close to finalized, we could send the whole thing or have a conference with an attorney that we would hire to advise us, independent of all the other legal councils involved in this. B E D C's got a lawyer, Mascoma's got a lawyer, the federal government's got lawyers, the investor's gonna have a lawyer.
I'd hate to be the only one at the table without a lawyer.
So. So that's, that's something we hadn't, hadn't talked about, frankly, but that's a, that's probably a good suggestion. And, and, but there, there, there won't be, there won't be any surprises at the closing table, or we wouldn't be there, and certainly we wouldn't sign the papers at the closing without them in terms of, you know, and, and, and one of the things I wanna say in general about this project at this point in time is that I'm, Counselor Hamel and I today are giving you all the information that we are, that, that, that we have today. But this is still, to some extent, a moving target. And I'm sure the exact details of this between now and closing are going to change. And, and so we'll have to continue to keep everybody in the loop as they happen as to what the latest developments are and whatnot. I don't think there're gonna be major changes, but almost certainly there will be some changes before closing.
Thank you.
Okay. So where are we today? Oh, one other thing I wanted to explain to you, because this won't make any sense once you start looking into these numbers. You will see the total project cost and the total sources of revenue, those are two highlighted numbers there, match up at fifteen million eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Well, how can that be if I told you that the limit for the project is fifteen million dollars? And right here, it's almost five, fifteen point nine. And the reason for that is because the fifteen million dollars, as I said earlier, is what's called the Q E I qualified, Q I E, investment, or whatever it is. I never can get it right, the Q E I. The qualified equity investment has to be fifteen million dollars or less. And there's one thing in here that, one expense that does not qualify as part of the fifteen million, as part of the limit, and that is the nine hundred thousand dollar, where is it here? C D E fee, the second line up from the bottom. That's the money that Mascoma Savings Bank is going to charge us to administer this, that nine hundred thousand dollars. And that is not a qualified, a Q E I expense. So that can't, that doesn't qualify. We can't get any tax credit money based on their fee. So that's over and above. So everything else can add up to the fifteen million dollars, but anything we pay them in way of fee does not count. That's why the total is fifteen nine, but the qualifying amount is fifteen, or just under fifteen, rounded off. Okay. Where are we today? Mascoma expects a tax credit allocation announcements to be made in late February or early March, as they were last year. No one really knows, but that's, that's the supposition at this point in time. All of the other components in the funding stack, which is the bottom of that middle column there, I have outlined the City of Laconia loan, I highlighted that at four point two million dollars. All other sources of income at this point in time that are listed on that, with the exception of the New Market Tax Credits, look okay at this point in time. They're in, everything is in order. As of now, the mothballed second and third floors of the Main Street Building are not part of the project. But B E D C is actively looking for a tenant who would develop those floors on their own. Okay. Important point here. In other words, what they're looking for is a tenant or a, to, to lease those second and third floors from them off the book, so to speak. That that, the cost of developing those two floors would not be part of the project. That was, that cost would totally be borne by whomever might lease that space. Okay. And they are, right now, talking to a local developer who has expressed significant interest at this point in time, although preliminary interest, to be fair. And a local developer has expressed interest in, in developing the second and third floor on his own, at his own expense, and renting slash selling the units eventually and whatnot at their own expense. So if that's, if that happens, or something similar happens during the course of the project, then that entity, that private developer, will rent that space for the seven years of the project. So there'll be rental income coming in to B E D C for, to the developer and whatnot. But the actual cost of the developing project will not be included in the project, will never be included in the project, and will be simply borne by the developer, but they'll rent the space. Then at the end of seven years, just like us with the theater, they'll own the space for a dollar, just like we're gonna do with the theater. They'll pay rent for seven years, and then at the end of seven years, B E D C will hand them the title and say it's yours. But any cost of developing the property and whatnot will be borne by them. Okay. As I mentioned, the current budget does not include the eight hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars for theater equipment. And the committee is asking the city at this time to consider purchasing that equipment on its own outside the official scope of the project. Four point two million dollars would remain the city loan total, but overall investment from the city would go from four point two million up to five point one million dollars. Okay. Everybody got that? So basically, what we're saying is, is that the city is being asked, the committee is asking the city to put another nine hundred thousand dollars into this project, raising the city's total investment in the project from four point two million dollars to five point one million dollars. And that extra nine hundred thousand dollars would be used for the city independently to purchase the equipment that used to be in the budget. That's the lighting, the sound equipment, and the rigging for the stage itself. So the actual project would not include any of those, and the city would buy that equipment and have that equipment installed on its own. For, for, we rounded that number off to nine hundred thousand dollars. Question. We'll get to where the nine hundred thousand comes from in a minute, but, but I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page about what that's. So that's what you're being asked tonight, is to consider putting another nine hundred thousand dollars of city money into the project. And you would do that not by increasing the loan amount, the four point two million, that would stay the same, but by taking, by, by using another nine hundred thousand dollars of city money to buy the lighting, the rigging, and the sound equipment for the stage itself, which the current budget does not have one single dollar in for. Okay. Everybody understand that? Okay. Scott has put together a base proposal, a starting point, for how the city could pay for the five point one million dollars. And that's on the third and final page of that packet that I gave you. Okay. So I will, without getting too far into the weeds, because we don't have to decide all this tonight, we're not asking for any decisions to be made tonight, is to quickly run through this. So the, the way, for, for those of you who are new and weren't here when this decision was made in two thousand and seventeen, the way the current funding package that, that the city has agreed to works is this. The four point two million dollar commitment. Of that four point two million dollar commitment, three point six million dollars was to come out of our unreserved fund balance, which before this whole project started was about five and a half million dollars. And Scott has told us that the city needs to keep a couple million dollars roughly in that fund balance for cash flow purposes. But the rest is surplus funds. So we're taking three point five, three point six million dollars of those surplus funds and putting it into this project. And the, the, the remaining six hundred thousand dollars that we would put at the table at closing of the current commitment would come out of the TIF fund, the downtown TIF Capital Reserve account. The total amount of money in that account, you will see at the top of that page there, is currently, where it says beginning balance, one point one six three million dollars. So the old plan called for six hundred thousand dollars coming out of that fund to make up the difference between the three point six and the four point two million dollar commitment. Okay. Then in addition to that, the, the, the Subcommittee on Finance chaired by Counselor Lippman in two thousand and seventeen recommended that, as the TIF fund began to replenish itself over the next few years and whatnot, that the, that another six hundred thousand dollars come out of the TIF fund over a period of years to go back into the unreserved fund balance. Everybody following that? So, and when all is said and done, it wouldn't be six hundred thousand dollars coming out of the TIF fund, but one, but, but one point two million dollars total. When all is said and done, would come out of the TIF fund in terms of, of, of capital. Six hundred thousand now, and then another six hundred thousand gradually over a number of years for a total commitment of one point two. So that would put, if we took three point six under this scenario out of the unreserved fund balance, we would, over a number of years, be putting six hundred thousand dollars back into. The TIF fund would be putting another six hundred thousand dollars back into that reserve fund. So a starting point for where did we come up with the new nine hundred thousand dollars has drawn up by Scott here. And I can walk you through this really quickly. We don't have to go into this in great detail tonight. I think probably we'd end up referring this to the Finance Committee again for further study. But just to give you an idea of, of one way that it could be done, the, the, the top idea off of Scott's head here is to say that the city, through the TIF district, would borrow, third column at the top, one point five million dollars. Okay. The one point five million dollars comes from the six hundred thousand that was gonna come out of the TIF fund anyway, that was already planned to come out, plus the, the new nine hundred thousand dollars, for a total of one point five million dollars. So the TIF fund borrows one point five million dollars over seven years. Okay. And the payments on that. And the payments on that, principal and interest, are in that fourth column there, where it says payments to the general fund, 243,000 dollars a year. So that would be the payments due on borrowing over seven years, 1.5 million dollars. Okay? The next column over, annual revenue estimate, that's anticipated new money flowing into the TIF account, growing at a rate of 2% a year. Okay, that's, so that's no new significant projects adding to the overall value of property in the district. It's just a little bit of inflation every year, is what he's figuring there.
And, and the 228 is this year's budget number, so that's a real number.
That's a real number. Then the, the next column, bond payments, are the commitments we've already made to take out of the TIF fund to, to make, to make payments on borrowings that have already happened. And principally, that's the, the extension of the Wild Trail and the River Walk, is where that money is going to.
The bridge.
In the bridge.
And the, yes, I'm sorry, in the Main Street Bridge. And then at the, at the right-hand, far right-hand column, you say that, what he's showing you there is if, if this plan is executed, borrowing 1.5 million dollars, that's the net balance that would be left in the TIF account, year by year, through the project. Okay? So you can see that in year seven of payback, the TIF account would, would dip to 160, the balance would dip to 168,000 dollars, its lowest point. And then once that bond had been paid off, then it would start building back up again, as the future. But one, one thing, two things that need to be, that need to be accentuated at this point in time, I think, are, one, this plan does not include any money flowing back into the general fund, which was in the first proposal, that $600,000. That's not part of this project. In other words, the, the 3.6 would come out of the general fund, unreserved fund balance, and nothing would, nothing would go back into it under this plan.
But there is plenty in outer years to...
In out years.
In out years to, I mean, at the ending balance that you're showing is almost three and a half million.
Yeah.
So it could be replenished and then some.
It could. And, and that brings up the second point, a great segue to the second point. And that is that we, if we did this, we would have to do so with the understanding that the TIF fund through 2025 would be pretty much tapped out. That we could not use the tip, there wouldn't be enough money left in the TIF fund for another major project, to be funded by the TIF fund, until it starts building back up again.
That's assuming no development occurs beyond what's already there.
Very conservative, but yes, just, we wanna make it clear that as this shows, this, this limits us for major projects for a couple of years, subject to something positive happening above and beyond the conservative estimates.
Yeah, we got two major projects going right now.
So this would in effect say, we're devoting pretty much the TIF fund to the Colonial Theater through 2025. And that we wouldn't be able to use this as the piggy bank for a major project again until after that loan was paid off. Or to put, use it to put money back into the general fund after that point in time.
Or, there, there's some other options, too. I mean, if you look at where the balance grows to, it's just how you structure the amortization of the subsequent borrowing, to have it fit with the future cash flows, like we did when we built the middle school.
Understood, and I think the one reason why we wanted to present this, if I can, Mr. Mayor, to seven years, that's the magic number for the unwinding of the New Market Tax Credits. So to, yes, we can look at structuring this amortization somewhere different, it was trying to...
No, you're misunderstanding what I'm saying. I'm talking about other projects outside of...
Oh, other, of future, yes, but that, that was the magic number, about seven years. Could you conceivably say, let's do it for 10 or 15 years on a bond to make the payment smaller? You could, just for the neatness of the complexity of this project, we thought seven years really made sense for a number of reasons.
That's when the, the federal law says you have to unwind it anyway.
Right, so it just made a lot of sense.
Yeah. So the, the, the final thing that I would like to say tonight is that, that, one of the conclusions that I think Councilor and I have come to and the rest of the committee, Councilor Hamel and I representing the city is concerned, is that, that timing continues to be a huge issue with this project in terms of trying to make sure that everything comes together in a timely fashion. And, and there are any number of reasons, I could outline why that's so important. Not the least of which is that the further things get drug out, the more likely that something bad is going to happen on one of the funding sources or whatever, or something. The cost of something goes up, or one of the funding sources, the parameters for it change, or we're not eligible for it anymore, or something else changes. Everything's gotta come together at one point. And, and, and the, the more we delay that, the less likely, in my opinion, it becomes that this thing will ever come together. And after having examined at, at great detail over months, at this point, my conclusion is, and I think Councilor Hamel's conclusion is, that there, and, and why we're asking the city council to commit another $900,000 to this project is realistically, there is no other source of revenue that could happen in a timely fashion for this project. It's like we're the, we're the last resort, if you will, for having this happen in a timely fashion that needs, that it needs to happen. And I think we continue to believe that, that this project is, is, is not only desirable, but vital in terms of the future of the city is concerned. I don't think that has, our commitment to that has lessened at all with this. And one of the things that has been mentioned by a number of us in this project is that, involved with this project, is that, you know, we, we just cannot afford to have this project fail, if there's any reasonable way of, of saving it and seeing it go to fruition. But realistically, this is a big commitment, and, and I don't wanna downplay that in any way, shape, or form. And one of the things we have to think about, and, and you have to ask questions about, is what happens if we say no? What happens if the council says, no, we're not gonna put any more money in this project? That's 4.2 is it. What happens to the project? And I think that, you know, I myself have, could offer you several possible scenarios about what will happen to the project if the council does say no, none of which are good, from my perspective. But, you know, you might have some ideas of your own, or some opinions of what might happen, if that is the case. But I don't believe personally that there's any, any realistic option at this point in time for keeping this project alive. And if the project dies at this point in time, then we've got a real mess. And, and, you know, I don't think I have to go in at this point in time to details. You can imagine that, you know, we've already got a million four invested in this thing that we won't get back. You know, we could repossess the building, but the building's not worth 1.4 million dollars, or there's no way we could sell it to somebody for 1.4 million dollars and get our money back. BEDC couldn't afford to pay us the 1.4 million dollars that they owe us. So there's not, there's not pleasant alternatives there. So in, in terms of timing, what we would like is to have an answer from the city council in a month's time. Basically, as I, as I said earlier, we're expecting the, Mascoma is expecting the announcements on the allocations to hit in late February or early March, at which time, if that happens, they will turn their immediate attention to us and say, okay, give us the package, we'll evaluate it right now, and everything's gotta be in order by that point in time. So if the city's in for another $900,000, then, you know, we need to know that by March 1st. So I'm sort of tentatively saying that, that we would like to have a yes or no decision on this from the council by our, by the end of our second meeting in February. And, you know, Councilor Hamel and I, and anybody else, BEDC officials and whatnot, stand ready to try and answer any and all questions that you all might have, either publicly, or if you wanna talk to either Councilor Hamel or myself privately, that would be fine, too. We'll do whatever we can to provide you with what, whatever information you desire between now and then. But we would like to have a resolution on this no later than the second meeting of February.
Mayor, I think there's a couple of things that need to be added to what you're, what you're saying in, in evaluating the whole situation. I think in terms of the, the project and the numbers that you've been throwing around. So I think the, I'd make these two comments. I think our original plan for participating in this project, that we're able, we're gonna be able to do that by tapping into funds that don't affect the current operating budgets that we have to make in terms of working under the tax cap. So in terms of working under the tax cap, that the monies that we're looking to invest in this project, we're not going to, if you will, increase the burden of having to, to meet the tax cap requirements. So I think that's an important thing. The other thing is that the...
And that's still the case.
That's still the case. Okay, that's an important point. The second important point is that the hassle factor of working through the structure is that you're gonna be able to get nearly twice the value of finished product for half the money, effectively.
From our standpoint.
My standpoint.
Yes, good point.
So, I mean, I think, you know, there's a lot of things that you talked about that, in going through that journey, that's, you know, you lose sight of what the, the goal was, is that...
And, and to that point, thank you for mentioning that. To that point, if, if our investment in this theater rises to 5.1 million dollars, if, if we were to make a decision to, to build a 750-seat municipal theater in the City of Laconia, it would prob, from what I can tell around the country, and I've done some research on this, the price tag would be somewhere in the eight to 12 million dollar range. And for that, for a similar facility is what it would cost us to do that, or the school district, or whoever did that. And the theater itself that we got as a result of that would be a modern theater, but it certainly wouldn't be the, it wouldn't have frescoes on the walls, and et cetera, et cetera.
And then, then the other factor that you have to take into account is the, the overall value of the downtown property with a quality building in the middle as opposed to a dilapidated situation. So we were gonna own this building, one way or the other, either indirectly by the impact that it had on, on the, on the property values of the downtown. And, you know, the building has at least been, through BD, BEDC's efforts, been made weather tight, so to speak, or in the process of being weather, weather tight, as opposed to where it could have been, you know, a bigger risk to the downtown overall. So I just, I think in terms of how we look at that. And then, you know, for purposes of the, the equipment, it doesn't have to come out in one, one chunk of money. We can, it, take, if we decide to do the equipment, it doesn't have to come out as a one-time $900,000 expense. It could be dealt with differently. So in terms of, again, not having to have it, you know, the idea of creating these TIF districts was to promote development that would add value. And I still think we can pull that off, is, I think the bigger picture here. So appreciate all the time you and Councilor Hamel have spent on, on trying to write this plan. And, but I do, I do think that the, the plan has, you know, when you boil it down to its simplest things, is that using the financing flow that we already have of non-tax revenue, that's part of our, building our annual budget, that we can achieve having the center of the town being of value as opposed to being detracting from value.
Councilor Hamel?
Okay, thank you. I think the mayor explained it very well, as, as far as the funding and the, the stack of funding and all that. But to, to try and address Andrew's question, the committee has followed what has been done in the past in Keene. The person airs Jack Dugan. He is the New Markets Guru for Keene and is associated with Mascoma Bank. Mascoma Bank is the only bank in New Hampshire that gets these credits. There is no other bank. There's one in Vermont, I believe, one in Maine, maybe a couple in Massachusetts. That's the only place we can go through. So we followed the model of what Keene has done. They've done several New Market Tax Credit projects over there, and also Concord has two. They're doing some right now. And that's why we lost out two years ago, is we got passed over for them politically. So we've been very careful of following what they've done, what was approved by all the lawyers, through the banks, so that when we, when we show up at Mascoma on the day that the tax credits are there, that stack has to be perfect. I mean, perfect. If there's one thing out of order, we may not get it. We have a lawyer in Portland who is the New Market Tax Credit guru, and he's known all over the country. He is the one who is examining our financial stack, which involves many historical credits. I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot. And we've had Justin, because it has taken so long, go back and be sure that these grants that we were supposed to get are still viable.
L-ship grants, stuff like that.
And still, you know, 'cause it's been a couple of years, we wanted to make sure we're still gonna get that. And he went through everything, and, and everything is still in order for us to receive all those grants. So basically, what we're waiting on right now is the New Markets. And if that falls, which we hope it will, it may, we don't know if it's gonna be longer because of the government shutdown, that might be one of the things. But we, over these 26 weeks of, 26 meetings, have dingenly, you know, tried to get all the ducks in a row and make sure things were appropriate and accountable.
Thank you, Bob. Questions at this point? Okay, well, I would ask that we keep this on the agenda, under unfinished business. And like I said, Councilor Hamel and I are available to answer any, all questions you have, either privately or publicly, we'd be happy to try to do that as things occur to you. Please don't hesitate to call on either one of us or both of us, and we'll, we'll, we'll do our best to track down the information for you, from you. And, you know, we'll talk about it briefly, again, at least briefly, at our next meeting in 1st of February, and see what, what, if any, progress we've made and what, what the council wants to do in terms of heading toward a, a final resolve of this issue. Councilor Hamel?
Yeah, just one more thing. The letter that we got from, that the mayor pointed out and highlighted some areas about Mascoma making us the number one project for us, if, for us, if they get the money. Like I said, two years ago, we were in line to get it, and we were told we were going to get it. There was $26 million in New Market Tax Credits available there. But for some reason or other, that got passed on to Concord, and they're doing that project now. So the mayor seemed to have a relationship with the person in charge at the Mascoma. So we asked him, that this time, we want it in writing, just not over the telephone, saying, yeah, you're next in line.
That's right.
So he spoke to him, and this letter is the result. So I think that means a lot, that they did put that in, in writing, that we would be the first on their list. And the mayor has done an extremely good job of, you know, looking for the end result of this whole thing and digging into it and bringing up a lot of good things that... of this whole thing and digging into it and bringing up a lot of good things that we had sketchy ideas on and to go out and get the, the true information. It's how all this stack works and with the new market tax credits, how they work is, you gotta scratch your head, but that's what the government set up, and that's what the Congress said, "You can do this."
And there are other-
It's not just anybody at the table saying, you know, "Can we really do this?" I mean, and if you ask the congressman, I'd be surprised if they could come up with the answer. But it, it's all legal, and that's the process that a government set up.
And our neighboring communities, Concord and Keene, are using it very effectively to-
Yeah, for many projects.
Improve their downtowns markedly.
Councilor?
I almost hesitate to ask this.
Don't then.
What happens if this doesn't go through? I mean, what do we do with this sudden albatross that's sitting there if we don't come up with fifteen million bucks?
Well, you mean, go through before closing, or?
Yeah, what I mean is, there was, I, I seem to recall some discussion at earlier meetings where Mascoma said they didn't get the allotment that they were looking for, or, or was that effect? What happens if-
Still could happen.
Well, I guess that's, so the nine hundred thousand, uh, suddenly becomes chicken feed compared to figuring out what we're-
So the worst case scenario right now is that the, the, the city council says, "Yes, we'll put another nine hundred thousand dollars," and that becomes part of the mix. And, and, but Mascoma once again gets no allocation, okay? We have no realistic alternative for that. Okay, so that's, that's, what does it say? Four point eight million dollars in the paperwork, I think I gave you. That four point eight million dollars just goes away. Now, the, the truth of the matter is that, and I'm, I'm glad you asked this question. The truth of the matter is that that four point eight million dollars is a gross number. We don't get four point eight net off of that. And that's one of the things that we have just gradually discovered over the months of getting in, into the weeds of this thing, is how many fees there are associated with getting that money. And the actual return, we're estimating is more like fifty percent. Meaning that to, to attract five million dollars of actual cash investment, you've got to pay fees of about half that. Okay? So if the, if the new market tax credits go away, that five million dollars, we're really down about half that in terms of net. Okay? So, but, so then, so if that happens, then we would be faced, okay, so we've, we've lost a net of about two and a half million dollars. You know, how is it possible to make that up? And that's what we would be looking at. We, so we'd be looking at two alternatives. One, we'd be looking at saying, "Well, let's wait another year. Let's put in, you know, we'll still be at the top of Mascoma's list theoretically, and we'll wait another year, and we'll hope they get tax credits a year from now." But as I said earlier, that's extremely risky for any number of reasons, not the least of which, everything else has to stay in place for a year or two, and what are the chances of that happening? B E D C, for example, has carrying costs. They're paying us four thousand dollars a month interest on that one point four we've already loaned them. This all becomes problematic for a bunch of players at some point in time, if we keep delaying it, keep hoping for these tax credits. Or we could say, "Okay, well, we've got a two and a half million dollar hole here now. Where could we find another two and a half million dollars?" Okay, well, I, I can already tell you, you know, where the deepest well is. You know, you already know that because we're sitting here tonight. There is no other well that I know of that, that could even begin to even contemplate making up that difference. So then you could say, "Well, let's cut two and a half million dollars out of the project." And, and Andrew Pike, who's been a, a amazing resource to us on, on the committee that Bob and I serve on, I think said it best, 'cause this came up at the last meeting we had, "What if?" And, you know, "What do we have if we cut two and a half million dollars out of the hard cost budget to build the theater?" And Andrew said, "A museum." And I thought that was as, as, as good as I could put it. In other words, you'd have a museum, but you wouldn't have a theater. You wouldn't have something you could hold. It would have no seats or whatever. I mean, to cut two and a half, it would have no air conditioning, you know, whatever that we would have to cut out of that to, to, to cut two and a half million dollars. So the options are not good. It, it, and like I said earlier, if we, if we pull the plug at this point in time, or if the plug gets pulled for whatever reason at the time, then, then, you know, Bell NAP Economic Development Council owes us one point four million dollars, which they don't have, and we have the mortgage on the real estate. And so then it would be, "Okay, now what do we do?" And, and, you know, if we, if we took possession of the real estate, some of it has some value. But the auditorium itself, as you hinted at earlier, really doesn't have any value from that standpoint. You know, I mean, it's, it's, no private party's ever going to redevelop that theater. It'd just be way too expensive. You know, we could probably sell some of the real estate and get some of our money back.
No, maybe one other thing, too, I, I didn't hear the mayor say, is that the five point two is a million that we'll be loaning out? That's a loan. So we will be getting interest back on it for the seven years.
We will what?
We'll be getting interest back on that money that we loaned out.
Yeah, it's-
But then it turns out being part of the-
Technically, yes, but not really, because-
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're-
Starting to sound more and more like a joking.
It is.
You know, I, I think we're-
We're charging them interest, but they're charging us rent. So it's-
You know, I, I gotta say here, we're, we're not helping our cause by this conversation. I think the, there are plenty of projects in Keene and Concord as examples that have successfully rebuilt downtown areas of, of properties that were in worse shape than what we're looking at. So, I mean, in any development project, there is, there are risks and, and reward opportunities. And, you know, I think we haven't got every contingency covered, but I think, you know, we're working with the best legal talent on this issue. We're working with a partner that had, has done this successfully in other parts of the state, you know? And if we had done nothing to begin with, we'd have a, a fire hazard in the middle of our downtown. So I think, you know, we've got to continue to stay the course. We know what our upset limit is in terms of what we're willing to put forward into the project. And, you know, putting on the negative hat doesn't do anything in terms of trying to advance this.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's a negative hat. I mean, I think we're, I mean, this is going to be definitely an exciting project and quite a revival for downtown, I believe. But I think we're just being honest of what happens if that doesn't happen. And it's, it's a possibility. I mean, it's fifty-fifty right now. We don't know.
Yeah. I'm sorry to interrupt. I, I don't think it's a negative hat. I think it's a realistic hat. Henry, you know, we, going back a little bit before I sat on this council, there's been some disappointment associated with this project. I think there was great enthusiasm when it kicked off. We anticipated a start date. I think most people realize it didn't happen. Nobody, not, many people don't realize or understand why it hasn't happened yet. And I also think the city and public funds are, it's still a significant investment in this. So I'm not here to rain on the parade of the colonial theater.
It's not the parade, counselor. You're, you're making it harder to get the project done by the-
I'm not making it harder to get it done at all. I'm asking questions here that I just want a little clarification. If, if you are asking for my vote on this to support it, I at least want to have my curiosity satisfied with some facts. So I'm not here to, 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 again, rain on this parade or be negative about it.
It's not a parade at all.
Fair enough. You can, you can play semantics with it, but I'm just asking questions that I think are really serious, that I'm trying to get a better understanding of so I can support this project. I just want to go in with my eyes wide open, and, and to act like somehow we're being unduly negative is totally unfair.
You know what? I have no issue with having all the facts on the table, but the way that we've been talking about it this evening is destructive, not constructive. And that's, you can disagree with that, but having had some experience in, in the development field, you don't-
Well, I think that comes across, across a tad bit condescending. And if that's the way you choose to, to, to proceed in this, I think it's a mistake. I think we want to go in with this best understanding we can have for the proper use of public funds, so we can all get behind a project we'll be excited about and, and make downtown live up to its full potential.
And counselor, I've, I've been on this council for seven, nearly seven terms, and we've operated within the tax cap and been financially responsible in all the projects that we, we met and have done. And the city has a good financial position in being able to do this. All I'm trying to suggest is if we want to talk about what a scenario looks like if the project doesn't complete, I don't have any, but I think we're just, the way we're talking about that particular scenario, have no, no problem with us outlining it all, but I don't like the way we're kind of going back and forth here. And I don't have anything more to say.
Well, perhaps for some of us who are relatively new to the council, the way it's been presented at times, I think there are a lot, awful lot of gaps in the information, not that they're intentionally withheld or obfuscated at all. Perhaps it's our, I'll speak for myself, my own learning curve, that I'd like to see some of these factual gaps filled in, and be careful on how much I assume.
And I would, for my two cents worth, counselor, I would, I have no, no problem with answering every one of your questions with as much detail as, as humanly possible.
I know that, and I appreciate that. Thank you. And you've been very open about this from the beginning with me, and I, and I greatly appreciate that.
I mean, I think, you know, I share Counselor Lippman's dedication to this project in general, and I could not overstate how important I personally think this project is to the future of our city. On the other hand, I agree with you that this is public money and that we need to be very upfront when we use it, in terms of, you know, what, what the risks are, et cetera, et cetera. And, and I don't, I don't object to that, so, but, but I, I don't want in any way to diminish from my standpoint how important I think this project is.
Thank you.
I appreciate the candor from both of you. All right, anything else? All right, so this will remain on the agenda then. Unfinished business, speaking of unfinished business, we have, are we doing Santa Gate tonight?
Yes, we are, sir.
All right. And Representative St. Clair is here representing Santa Gate, is that right? I thought we postponed this because they weren't here last time.
No, we, we postponed it because I wasn't aware it was on the agenda. It was an oversight, so that's why. So I have-
Okay, so refresh our memories here about what, we delayed this, I thought, last time because the applicant was not here to answer questions.
It was requested to be on the agenda two weeks ago, and the applicant was not here, so we didn't take it off the table at that, at that point. So it is still tabled at this point, pending additional information on how the city's interest would be protected if footings were drilled into the sidewalk. I think that was the gist of what the council's concern was when this was first presented.
All right, we got some handouts coming, just all the same?
Same thing.
Same thing. Thank you. All right, are you prepared to make a presentation tonight, or where?
I am. You've got every, the only, the question that we didn't have, you should have in your packet there, a photo of the design of the poles to hold the deck up. The poles are not on city property. They are on the property that's owned by Anthony. And what Anthony has proposed is a forbond to be held in case any of the cement slabs crack with the installation of these poles.
Okay, so he's offering to post a, a bond.
That's correct.
Should the city sidewalk be damaged by the placement of these poles?
That's correct.
All right, those of you who had a question about this issue last time, want to weigh in on this? Not mentioning any names.
Bob?
I mean, and now we see that, now there's going to be railings and picnic tables on the other side of it. I know there's picnic tables there now, but now there's a railing added. I guess the question I asked the last time was, since when we redid the sidewalk, did the owner pay for anything on his portion of the property for us doing his sidewalk?
They did not pay, and that's not uncommon for projects where we are disrupting private areas and the fact we've got utilities underground in that area, and we needed part of the private sidewalk in order to bring it into ADA compliance. So for those reasons, we did not charge this particular property, nor would we do it. And that's not unusual, nor would we do it in a number of areas where we're in there doing a construction project. But there are utilities underneath the private part that we needed, and the ADA compliance came into-
That begs the question, if they're going to be drilling down through our sidewalk, will they be drilling into the underground conduits?
They will not. They would have to be doing it-
Because that's where they are.
They would have to be doing a dig safe monitoring before they drill, and then where they are drilling is in a private portion of the sidewalk. The only easement area that was being requested was on the overhang up off of the second floor. The actual footings as shown are on private property. The concern was the protection of the public sidewalk. So really, the request is, when you boil it down to it, is the overhang easement, and then the concern came up about having some added protection for what if? So the council could certainly grant the easement and make condition of, before approving a building permit, all of the other things that we talked about, about noise and about glass bottles being out on the deck and all those other types of things, could make a condition that the appropriate bond is posted with the city before a building permit is issued, in an amount to be determined by the city. And we can make that a condition-
So we don't have any wires underneath that portion?
I, I don't know specifically where we are. They would have to obviously do their diligence and do a dig safe to come in and identify all the spots before any, whether it's a private project or a public project, dig safe needs to be notified if you're going into the ground.
So, so this bond, is this, is this a not-ending bond that if, because if they are up there and a bottle falls and lands on someone's head walking along the sidewalk, who's responsible for that?
No, the bond would be for construction damage that would occur. Beyond there, they would have to carry the appropriate liability insurance, as all establishments would do for their business.
If I may interject, counselor-
You may.
Thank you. The bond, or as, not a bond, liability insurance is in effect now, as you know. If somebody throws a bottle out of an open doorway onto the city sidewalk or onto the road from a business, they will be held liable for that, and their insurance would have to cover that.
It's not to say somebody couldn't file a suit against the city if they got injured on city sidewalk, but the difference is, you have the right to file that suit, the likelihood of being successful in it, you've got to think. You can't stop people from suing over anything they choose to do, it's whether they'll be successful. But now to your first question, we can make a posting of the bond during the construction period contingent on the issuance of the building permit, along with other stuff that we're going to be delegating, delegating to staff regarding use of the deck, noise, glass, those types of things.
And if it makes any difference, or the projected, if this is approved, construction wouldn't start until the fall, after the season.
So this, this performance bond would only cover the construction period?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so do we, do we want to incorporate this into the motion?
I think the first thing we need to do is to vote to move, remove this from the table.
Yeah.
And then you would make a motion to approve contingent on the city being satisfied with the appropriate bond being in place before a building permit is issued and other-
You would have to be satisfied, because we're authorizing you.
Authorizing me. And then we've also talked about having Planning Department staff, meaning Planning Director, put other conditions associated with noise, glass on the deck, get those types of things.
Anybody object to taking this off the table at this point? Anybody object to taking this off the table at this point in time? All right, someone care to make that motion? Councillor Hosmer, second, councillor Cheney. All in favor of taking this item off the table, please raise a hand. All those opposed? All right, four, four votes yes, one vote no, so it is back on the table. All right, so are we ready to get to a vote on a motion? And you can weigh in on that if you want, in terms of debate. All right, so a motion being ordered to approve the request from Santa Gate Properties LLC for city council approval of an easement for construction of a deck over, over city property located at 264 Lakeside Avenue in Laconia, as shown on the plan entitled Deck Framing for Tower Hill Tavern, 264 Lakeside Avenue, Laconia, New Hampshire, prepared for Santa Gate Properties LLC dated August 2, 2018, and prepared by Farewell Engineering Services LLC, and to authorize the city manager to sign all necessary easement and agreement documents contingent upon satisfaction of the work proposal with bond. Letter? That do it?
Sure.
Bond agreement.
Signed by Mr. Santa Gate. Okay, everybody got that? All right, someone care to make that motion? Councillor Hosmer, second, councillor Cheney, discussion. Councillor Lippman?
I'm not satisfied with the conditions around the construction of this. It's not, to me, just about cracking concrete, it's about how the construction project's going to affect the, the area and other business around it, around it when it's occurring, and also about getting something to address the concerns, notwithstanding the fact that they can sue the landowner if there's something not going right there, but what the policies and procedures are going to be on the deck. I'm not against the project, I just am not satisfied that we've got all our contingencies covered here.
Councillor Cheney?
Henry, I, I thought that the reference to the planning director also being involved would take care of many of those issues. Am I, are you not satisfied with that?
No.
Okay.
Councillor Hamel?
I've been in favor of everything that we've done up there over the years. You know, we voted to extend the underground from Tower Street up to the other street there, can't think of the name of it offhand, and put everything underground to get rid of the clutter. What, what's happening up there now is, you know, they've got their picnic tables on their sidewalk, which is fine, but then they also got chairs by the curbing, by where the meters, oh, well, the meters used to be, but where the cars parked. They have a row of chairs there now, too. So, you know, if you, if you put in the poles and all this stuff, are we going to tell them if you do that, you can't have the chairs on the sidewalk anymore?
I have not told them that in the past, and I've done that administratively for anybody down there. My, my points have been, we need to keep a clear and wide path for pedestrians, strollers, wheelchairs, to make it accessible, that you can't be moving things into the tip-down area, as is a little bit, both on that corner and the next corner down, and also that you can't require someone to have purchased something from your property or your business in order to sit in that chair or sit at that table and enjoy themselves. So that's been consistent for all of the properties who have put some out, and I think that's what we really were hoping for when we widened the sidewalks and got rid of the poles, was to try to create places where people would want to gather and sit outside and enjoy themselves. So we really focus on pedestrian flow and not blocking the crosswalks, and rather than trying to go down there and be too strict and control every single thing, there's kind of that gentleman's agreement, and I think for the most part, with a little bit of an early learning curve, it's worked well over the last two summers. And that's my take, and, you know, we really haven't, when we've had complaints early on, we've addressed it. Everybody kind of understood what the ground rules were to be without us cracking down too hard, and the majority of the time, I think it's, I think it works well. As you say, the picnic tables are there already on private property. They've been there for years.
Further discussion? Ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to grant Mr. Santa Gate's request, please raise a hand. All those opposed, please raise a hand. Three votes yes, two votes no, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, second reading of Resolution 2019-01 relative to Comcast proposal for a competitive TV, cable TV franchise in Laconia. The resolution itself is on page 34 of your packet. This would require three readings, three motions to be passed. Any questions about procedure or anything before we get to voting here? Okay, motion, first motion being ordered would be to waive a reading of Resolution Number One in its entirety and to read tonight by title only. Councillor Hosmer makes that motion, is there a second? Councillor Cheney, I'm councillor Cheney. Councillor Haynes seconds that motion, excuse me. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, five votes in affirmative, that motion carries. All right, second motion is to adopt second reading of Resolution 01 relative to authorizing the city manager to sign any documents on behalf of the city relative to the Comcast proposal for a competitive cable TV franchise in Laconia. Who wants to move second reading? Councillor Hamel, seconded by councillor Hosmer, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Thank you, five votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. And finally, motion to be in order to approve Resolution 01 relative to authorizing the city manager to sign any documents on behalf of the city relative to the Comcast proposal for competitive cable TV franchise in Laconia. Councillor Hamel makes that motion, councillor Hosmer seconds it, any discussion? Councillor Cheney?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I found the discussion earlier a bit disingenuous, and I can't vote for this because of two or three things. I might point out that the representative from Atlantic Broadband sort of offhandedly mentioned the fact that they'd be reviewing the contract with their lawyers. I suspect we'll be hearing from them about emergency notification if, if this company is allowed to have a franchise without the requirement that they have. Secondly, I find it disingenuous to say, we're doing it in other locations, but we can't do it here. And, and at the same time, they tell us that when they update any area, they update every area of their footprint. So I'm assuming that the ability to do it exists, if it exists in other places, it would exist here. And I, I just, nobody supports the idea of, of competition more than I do. But I, I'm concerned about the, the way this company approaches us and says it won't do what it can do, and what we require another company to do already. I don't think it's fair to the other company, and I think it's disingenuous. Thank you.
Further discussion? Councillor Lippman?
So on the discussion, I thought in terms of an option for providing a different mechanism was laid out there. I guess in terms of just getting the ball rolling with respect to the resolution on the table and moving it forward, giving the manager and yourself a chance to, to work on what the option, I know that the option of having exactly the same may be the preferred one, but maybe there's a, a second approach that gives us a different way of accomplishing it, that gives us, if you will, some backup.
I've, I've been in a lot of these meetings, and when you say it's something we can look at.
No, 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 I'm not saying we look at, would be part, something that we could look at that be, would be incorporated into the agreement. In other words, what they basically said to us is they're making a financial to make up the difference, and I think what you're saying, the financial is not necessarily the preferred route to go, that, I don't know, whether it be a reverse 911, or you, you used a few different terms of art that I'm not familiar with, that would be other ways of accomplishing notification that, that may be worth looking at, that would give us more than one method of getting the word out.
If, if the manager can secure some other method for mass notification, I certainly would feel better. But I would also tell you that there's a certain segment of our population who gets everything from television, and most of them are my age and older.
But the power goes out, you know, that's.
Yeah, well, true. And, and that may speak to the issue of some other means of notification, but we don't have it now.
Right.
And this other company has to provide it. It doesn't seem fair to me that they should have to. This company refuses, not can't, but refuses to provide it.
I'll respect your years of running the 911 system, and you're basically the father of making that system available in the state. So, you know, I think it'd be, it'd be good if you, and the manager could explore that, but if we can keep, kind of keep the process moving, we still have, we're putting it on the table so that we can advance it for, for the discussions, as a chance to vote it up or down as we go forward here.
So do you want to move to table?
Oh, I think we should get the resolution read and, and in motion here. We can, as I understand the voting process here, you said there was going to be three readings, is it correct?
Those three motions tonight, so this is it. We either table it here, or we approve it, or we reject it tonight.
Well, I guess in terms of trying to get this issue worked out, if we could table it till the 28th.
So you're moving to table?
Yeah.
All right, so councillor Hosmer is moving to table the last resolution that I read. I'm sorry?
Councillor Lippman.
What did I say?
Me.
Oh, sorry. Councillor Lippman moves to table.
I will, yes.
Councillor Haynes seconded. All those in favor of tabling, please raise a hand. All those opposed, please raise a hand. Four votes yes, one vote no. It is tabled and placed on the agenda under unfinished business for our meeting on the.
The next meeting?
Yep.
On the 14th, I don't know what that date is.
28th.
28th.
Although, we're still in January, I'm sorry, January 28th, yes. I'm skipping ahead to February already.
We get a motion to.
Point of order. Make the motion.
I need a motion to extend the meeting until 10:15 PM. Councillor Hosmer, seconded by councillor, councillor Haynes, I'm sorry, getting late.
Or Cheney.
After 10, you have to wear signs, so I can remember who's who. All right, all those in favor extending the meeting 15 minutes, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative, thank you. All right, thank you for calling after my attention. That was always Armin's job.
Oh, okay, well. I have a new job.
I'm glad somebody picked up the ball there. All right, so we're on to our last piece of unfinished business, and that is the sewer charges. Any questions or comments before we get to making motions there? We had no input. Again, we have three, three motions to pass here tonight, or act upon, I shouldn't suppose. The resolution itself is on page 38. First motion be to move a waive, to, to waive the reading of this ordinance in its entirety and to read by title only. Councillor Hosmer makes that motion, seconded by councillor Cheney, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative, that motion carries. Next, move, a motion being ordered to approve on second reading ordinance 2019-189-50-01 in ordinance amending chapter 189-50 sewer charges. Someone care to make that motion, please? Hello, yes, councillor Hosmer, seconded by councillor Haynes, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative, that motion carries. And finally, a motion being ordered to approve ordinance 2019-189-50-01 relative to sewer charges. Councillor Hosmer, seconded by councillor Haynes, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five, all those opposed, please raise a hand. We have four votes yes, one vote no, motion carries. Thank you. All right, council comments? Councillor Hamel?
I just, I just have one, as far as Comcast goes in this emergency thing. I should have brought it up, but it just dawned on me. All the people who have DirecTV, Dish and Dish and all that stuff, they're going to get zero notification. It's probably half the city.
That's why I, I was thinking that's some other option.
In a way, what good is that? I mean, I know nothing about the reverse 911. I don't know if that's something that they have to do, or it's something that we do.
No, it's a vendor who.
Or the state does, or what?
It's a vendor who sells you software.
I mean.
Make notifications.
I, I think the day of that kind of thing has passed. You know, where everybody's got cell phones and all this stuff, and you can be notified in 10 seconds with either a text, or, well, look at the federal government. They're, they're using your cell phones. I didn't get that alert, but they, they tested it a while ago for the whole country. So, you know.
They had a list of people they didn't care about.
Yeah, they didn't want me to go up in flames, I'm sure. But, you know, it's just, where you might have half the city not even on cable.
Listen, I agree wholeheartedly, and frankly, I, I like Henry's suggestion that we seek another way, but I was concerned when they said we'd be willing to look at that. Well, I'm willing to look at it, but I'm not going to pay for it. And I don't think they want to either. That's my concern. But, but I agree that, that, but I, I also suggest to you, Bob, that there are a number of people in this city who turn to their TV.
Absolutely.
Their cable TV to find out what's going on, and we ought to have that option if we can, or at least a suitable substitute for that. And I'm fine with Henry's suggestion that we look for a su, or have the manager look for a suitable substitute.
I mean, at the end of the day, the, the only, they can only be held accountable to an equal investment.
And I think that it, it was discussed with our, with our legal counsel on this, that it is impossible to get two cable franchise agreements that are crafted at separate times to be completely identical to each other. So there were concessions made against this, and, you know, you're not going to have an identical apples to apples. But I think at the end of the day, when someone weighs the two proposals and what the expectation is from both, I mean, in the existing MetroCast franchise agreement, they maintain an INET, an information net, which links all of the buildings together, all the municipal buildings together. Well, they constructed that in the first agreement, which obviously was a much bigger expense. They're just maintaining what's there now. There was no reason in the Comcast agreement to require Comcast to build out another INET or maintain an INET, because having two INets doesn't do you anything better than having one INET. So that's an area where it didn't make sense, and you would put something else in the Comcast agreement to offset that. We have been very open with Atlantic Broadband, they have gotten copies of the draft agreement and finalized agreements all the way along, so we certainly respect them as a provider of cable services in the city and look to continue to work with them because they will still be here. I think to look down the road into Rochester, I don't know all of the specifics, but I know the Rochester franchise agreement with Comcast was not identical to the Rochester franchise agreement with Atlantic Broadband. And, but they were similar enough and didn't put one at an advantage or a disadvantage over the other, that there wasn't any legal challenge. I can't say that there wouldn't be a legal challenge by Atlantic Broadband on this one, but there's certainly a track record of it happening between the same two companies, similar type of situation, and there was no challenge, because I think communities try to be fair and construct these agreements so that everyone's on a level playing field. But happy to have the conversation to follow up on what they said they may be willing to do, and would look to expedite that so we can get this on to your agenda for the 28th, because I really think that's kind of at the end of the window that they've indicated, and I would not like to see this go any further than a vote one way or the other on the 28th. But I will definitely.
You don't want to see them move on.
I will definitely connect with the representatives tomorrow and continue the conversations as we have.
Any other council comments? You can fit in six minutes.
Yes, just a brief question while Wes is here, just looking at the, is there additional plans to remove snow or salt and sand in the downtown area?
We're still working.
You're still in, okay.
Yeah, it just takes us a while.
Okay, I was just checking.
I've had several...
About 107 Darma Street.
...comments about the icy sidewalks and stuff.
We've had two trucks and the loader working constantly since we pulled all the spreaders out of the back, and it just takes a while with the sander, because we only got a few for the sidewalks.
Okay.
This has been, obviously with the temperatures, this has been a very challenging storm with any positive melting happening in the last four days. And we understand the sidewalks are not in the greatest shape, but there's only so much sand that's solid, do, and Mother Nature's got to help out a little bit.
Who is... A question, because Representative St. Clair and I had this conversation standing on Main Street the other day. Who bears the responsibility for, in the aftermath of a storm downtown, speaking of downtown, for connecting crosswalks with sidewalks? In other words, if I'm trying to cross Main Street in a crosswalk, and I get to the other side, and there's a snowbank there, I can't get to the sidewalk, whose responsibility is that to clear that? Is that the store owner's responsibility? Is it the city's responsibility?
For crops, painted crosswalks to sidewalks is public works. And for the most part, by the end of this, end of our cleanup period, we've caught up with that. The piece that we don't do is that piece in between where we've got the window in place and people want to cross over the snowbank to get to a store directly. That, until we come in with the loader, we don't get to.
Yeah, I'm talking about at the end of a crosswalk.
Right, that's what we do.
A marked crosswalk, but you can't get from the crosswalk to the sidewalk.
Yeah, that waits till we started, let's see, storming it Wednesday, about Thursday, we were down there with the Bobcat with the blower, cutting, doing final punch-through on it. But for the most part, we had it punched through after the storm was sometime Wednesday.
Okay. Any other council comments? No need for non-public tonight, I presume? All right, if there are no other business coming for the council, I'm going to declare this meeting adjourned at 10:12 PM. Thank you. We haven't had a 10 o'clocker in a while.